Thank you very much for coming, everyone. I'm sorry for the delay. We're still awaiting the arrival of our chairwoman, who should be here shortly. But until she does arrive, I will call this special meeting of the Highland Park Plan and Design Commission to order. Will you please take the role, Director Fontaine?
Commissioner Incheck.
Here.
Commissioner Fetner.
Here.
Commissioner Nannis.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Mantis.
Here.
Vice Chair Kirsch.
Present.
And Chair Moore. We have a quorum. I do recognize City Council Liaison Naomi Ross and Corporation Council Marcus Martinez. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The first order of business is approval of the minutes. That would be from the regular meeting on July 15th. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion approved and seconded. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstention.
Two abstentions, okay. Thank you very much. Our only, our main item of scheduled business tonight is the reopening of public hearing number PUD 2025-00041 for a special use permit in the nature of preliminary and final plan development, rezoning to RM1 and R7, resubdivision, design review, and modifications from city code for a 232 residential unit townhome development at 1660 and 1700 Old Deerfield Road. Notice and everything was given previously, so Senior Planner Burrhop, do you have a presentation for it?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just want to recognize Chair Moore has joined us, so she'll assume the helm of chairwoman at this time.
Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Carl Burrhop. I'm a senior planner with the City of Highland Park in the Community Development Department and the Planning Division. So this is a continuation of an application and request for rezoning, a plat consolidation, a plan development, and a design review for this site, the 1700 Old Deerfield Road site. This has been the introduction slide for every presentation. This also alludes to the first change. The applicant did strike eight units from the proposal. It's been reduced from 240 to 232 units. Just for, just to remind the commission and the public, this item was at the April 1st, May 20th, and June 24th special meetings of the Plan and Design Commission. Okay, updates and changes. So the density was reduced from 240 to 232 units. I'll just run through these quickly. There's additional slides on most of these. There is an increase in the setback along the north property line. That's the property line that abuts commercial properties to the north. So for most of it, it was increased to 35 unit, or excuse me, to 35 feet to the townhome units, except for one location. The setback along the east, which is the railroad right-of-way, is now compliant. It was increased to 25 feet. That means that all setback relief has been eliminated. There were changes to the public benefit to offer more public parking spaces. The total parking spaces for the developments use, strictly for the development, was reduced from 713 to 690 spaces. I think in my report it said 685, but on the applicant's most recent site plan iteration, it was 690 spaces. The applicant is also proposing to grant an easement for public access to the woodland trail along Ridge Road and the top lot. Design changes to be presented by the applicant. I do have one slide on that. And then I saw that in the landscaping, excuse me, in the open space plan, the open space is increasing from what was proposed, which was 40%, which is double the planned development requirement of 20%, is increasing to 42.5%. Okay, so this slide here gets to commission and public comments about the open space along Ridge Road and along the south, which is proposed to be rezoned R7. So this slide is just about that area. And so this was also in the staff report. So what are the restrictions, or will the restrictions be, on that land to keep it open space? So right now, there's a 100-foot existing building and parking setback covenant that's on the property now. That runs from the west property line along Ridge Road. There's a proposed wetland conservation easement. This was discussed at the last commission meeting. That was bulky language, so I didn't want to put it up on the slide, but my staff report did specifically quote that in the report. Of course, that was also in the applicant's plat exhibit. And so what that wetland conservation easement does is it prohibits development within that area, actually, it's actually more than just the R7 area. It's actually all the open space along the west and the south that essentially goes right up to the back of the proposed townhome units. And then if approved, that area would be encumbered by the planned development, the PUD ordinance and the development agreement. It'd be subject to that Article 5, Section 150.545 Sub-A Sub-1 substantial chain triggers. You know, the applicant proposes R7 zoning for this area. Staff does not object. Most zoning, you have step downs in between. You know, the applicant proposes RM1. R7 is a step down from that. The adjacent zoning tends to be R6. The we're-public comments submitted late that will be in the next packet that suggested it be R1. The applicant's application staff does not, certainly would not oppose R1 either. So traffic impact summary. So I try to keep this brief in my presentation because this is a wordy section. And again, it wasn't the staff report. And what the staff report was, is it essentially summarizes, one, it summarizes the applicant's consultants' various studies and responses to questions, which were reviewed by the city's third-party traffic consultant, CivilTech. So, and again, this is a summary. You would primarily refer to those exhibits in the packet in full. So overall, all intersections that were in the study will have sufficient reserved capacity to accommodate what the traffic engineers refer to as year 2031 traffic volumes, assuming the development is built as proposed, and will improve the overall operations of the intersection of Old Deerfield Road with Ridgefield Avenue. So that's probably the overall takeaway. So several questions were put to the applicant's consultant, specifically their traffic consultant to respond to. And again, the city's third-party consultant, CivilTech, did review the responses and did not indicate objections, and again, indicated that the applicant, the applicant traffic consultants had responded to their comments and concerns and questions. So for connecting the Highway 41, in summary, that's not possible. Highway 41 is 550 feet away from the site with intervening railroad right-of-way private properties and the Skokie Valley bike path all in between. So then as for access, so there's the access road and the northwest spur access road, that's the one thing that runs along the railroad. So there's a question, well, what if that was the primary access? And so the applicant's consultant summarizing, I'm summarizing their comments, would require development traffic to traverse commercial industrial area, because that area is commercial industrial. There would be additional travel for the development generated in traffic, causing additional circulation of traffic in area roadways. Then also, there was a question, the applicant is proposing to do left-hand turn lanes on Old Deerfield Road at the Ridgefield Avenue intersection. So there was a question, just what traffic is being caused by the development that triggers that versus what pre-existing traffic is already there? So the applicant's traffic consultant stated that for the morning, the development is generating 13.5% of that traffic that's taking that left-hand turn, and the afternoon 4.4%, and evening it would be 6.4%. Again, that's the applicant traffic consultant's traffic projections for this project if it's completed as proposed. Another question put to the applicant to have their consultant respond was the write-in and write-out only, which, for the current primary entrance. So the applicant proposes a primary entrance roughly across from the police stations, across from the police department property. And so the applicant's traffic consultant reiterated responses similar to their response on using that spur railroad access road, and it would increase traffic that would then have to go through the industrial commercial areas, and that it would also increase vehicular circulation on the area roadways. They also, I think, indicated that in their study, they did not see concerns with left-handed movements from the primary entrance. Specific question was also put to the applicant, other traffic consultant, ask about an additional entrance to the development onto Ridge Road. Again, this is the summary of what the applicant's consultant said. It says it was not preferred because it would require additional impervious through wooded and wetland area, and only marginally reduce traffic onto Old Deerfield Road. They also stated in the report, you know, just the reiteration that there's also a neighborhood there as well, and so then that would be an access, putting traffic out onto a street where there are single-family homes across from the development. And then finally, there was a question put to the applicant's traffic consultant about the prior land use, the former Solo Cup site, which has been out of operation for over 10 years. And so the question was to them to project, or, you know, backwards project or backwards generate, what was that traffic generation compared to what this proposed 232 townhome unit development would do? And so the applicant's consultant indicated that would have generated approximately 40 to 56 more in-and-out trips during the weekday morning, afternoon, and evening peak hours. That would be going back previously to when the Solo Cup was in operation and had staff coming to and from, and deliveries to and from, et cetera. And then I have two slides on a general intersection review, and then those will be my slides on traffic. So the applicant's consultant indicated that the Deerfield Road and Ridgefield Avenue intersection has a current level service LOS of C, and that it would remain a C. They had additional comments, you know, and I tried not to make these slides too wordy. They had additional comments that were also in the report, and of course, for the full, you just go to their exhibit, which is in the posted packet. They also talk about for certain intersections, like just how many more seconds would be increased or decreased. In a few instances, they had said, you know, 1, 2, 3 seconds, something like that. So then moving on to Old Deerfield Road and Ridgefield Avenue intersection, so this was actually probably the most text, or the most in-depth analysis the applicant's consultant provided. So they indicated the current level of service LOS is respectively B, C, and B during, well, yeah, respectively weekday morning, afternoon, and evening peak hours. The traffic, the applicant's traffic consultant, the report acknowledged long northbound queues, which, you know, that's right there in front of the police department, that's what we're talking about, sometimes extending all the way down south to Ridge Road. This is due to existing heavy northbound to westbound traffic volumes, and the current always stop sign control and the lack of an exclusive left turn lane. So the applicant's traffic consultant indicated that the intersection will operate overall level of service similar to existing during all peak hours, and then indicated it would equal or improve the current LOS because the northbound queues will be reduced from a 95th percentile queue of 270 feet under existing conditions to approximately 110 feet. So what that's referring to, my understanding is that's referring to just traffic backing up to turn left. So the applicant's traffic consultant is indicating there that queues can extend all the way down to Ridge Road and be up to 270 feet or more under certain circumstances, and that that should be brought down to approximately 110 feet. Doesn't mean it would always be that, obviously. That's either some type of average or median. And finally, Ridge Road and Old Deerfield Road intersection, current LOS level of service B will remain similar, product will have limited impact, that's what the applicant's traffic consultant stated. And then for the Old Deerfield Road and Old Skokie Valley Road intersection, and the Old Deerfield Road with the north access road, the spur road on the railroad, they indicated current level of service is A and will remain the same. So that is my attempt to summarize the applicant's, traffic consultant's, most updated responses going back to comments and concerns from the June 24th commission meeting. And again, all of these reviews were put to the city's third-party reviewer, CivilTech. And actually, that was updated in the packet as well. That memo was updated either yesterday or Friday. Yes, are there any questions on traffic or that, or I'll move to another subject?
We have a question from Commissioner Mantis.
And of course, I may have to defer to the applicant's traffic consultant, but I will attempt to respond.
I think this one's for you, Carl. So my background is in real estate finance, not in traffic studies, so I'm going to plead a little bit of ignorance on here. And ever since I was first appointed to the commission, I've always kind of taken the approach of deferring to the professionals that we rely on for this information to be done and done accurately. So you mentioned that CivilTech reviewed the traffic studies that was prepared by the applicant's, you know, consultant.
As well as supplementary material, yes.
You said there were no objections by CivilTech.
That's right.
Is it fair to say that in the opposite way? Is CivilTech's comments, can those be taken as validation of what is being provided?
Yeah, I think that's fair, because what CivilTech looks at is, they look at how any applicant does, you know, what are their assumptions, what are the math they provided, what are the sources they use? Because I've looked at CivilTech review memos and comments for more than several years now as a staff member, and that's, tends to be what they look at, that everything, they kind of look at, it's like a math problem. They look at kind of how the math was done and make sure that it kind of adds up.
So in other words, right, like, so my gut told me that a write-in, write-out might be better. That question was put to the applicant's consultant.
That's right.
CivilTech reviewed it, and that, in effect, is validation that that may not actually be the best course of action for this development as proposed.
Well, right. I mean, that's according to the applicant's consultant, and then our third-party reviewer did not indicate concerns or indicate that assumptions or math done was wrong related to that.
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, for me, the most, it's all illuminating, but to me, the most illuminating part was the, and I know the former Solo Cup use is not, you know, it's been inactive for over 10 years, but I thought that was interesting to find out that, you know, that the applicant's traffic consultant said that when it was being used, you know, with all the employees and staff they had and deliveries, that they estimated generated somewhere between 40 to 56 more in-and-out trips during weekday morning, afternoon, and evening peak hours. Now, again, I know that hasn't been the site conditions for something like 10-plus years, but I personally thought that was kind of interesting. And our CivilTech did not indicate that the assumptions and math that went into that were wrong?
Oh, yes.
Yes. Question on the last slide. So go back again, sorry, yeah. So just explain to me, or have the traffic engineer explain to me, just kind of in simple terms of like why, in the write-in, write-out scenario, that increased vehicular circulation on area roadways is a negative? Like, to me, it thinks, like, my brain circulating the traffic into a broader area with decreased traffic and would be a better outcome than shoving it all at one spot. So I'm just trying to understand why increasing the circulation on area roadways is a negative in this situation.
Yeah. I would defer to the applicant's traffic consultant on that. The only thing I will add, because again, I tried to summarize here, there's more in-depth in the report and more in-depth in the exhibits. The other thing I would add is that if it was a write-out, write-in only, then that would mean that people using the development that wanted to get out and take a left onto Ridge, would then either, they'd have to use the spur road that goes along the railroad, and they'd either have to take a left onto that extension of Ridgefield, which is, you know, runs through those commercial businesses, or go all the way up and take a left onto Old Deerfield Road at the top of the development. But yeah, I'd have to also defer to the traffic engineer on that.
So essentially, they're still wanting to take a left, just making it a lot harder to do, but they still need to take a left.
No, I get that, but...
To figure out how to get left.
But isn't spreading it out...
So put that out, turn it over to the...
Reducing the conflicts and making traffic lighter, in essence, because there's more options to go?
I defer to the applicant's professional.
Do you want the applicant to respond now?
Sure, yeah.
Do you want the applicant to respond, sure?
I mean, unless you guys have more questions for the state.
I can still finish my presentation. This is what we're on right now, so I can finish my presentation after this.
Please.
Oh, did you want me to go, I missed that?
Oh, he can go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
For continuity, I think it would make sense to have the applicant respond.
Yeah, this is the, this is the topic we're on right now.
Yeah.
Good evening. Michael Wirthman with KLOA in front of you, shuttle times now. You know, first... You know, first off, I just want to say that the full access is projected to operate, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I need to take that out of my apologies. The full access drive with the improvements that we're proposing at the Old Deerfield and Ridgefield Avenue, that intersection and the access drive is projected to operate at a very good level of service and will operate well. That has been confirmed by your third-party consultant. What we have proposed is a full access on Old Deerfield Road and access onto the access road to help distribute that traffic. You are correct, sir. It's nice to be able to distribute that traffic. The problem is, when you make it a write-in, write-out, you're forcing a good percentage of your traffic to have to come in that access road. So they have to travel through a business park, there may be trucks there, parked there, backed up, causing additional delay. More importantly, if you're having guests come to the facility, how do you tell them to get there when they're trying to get to the facility? You've got to tell them to go down Ridgefield through an industrial area, then make a right down the railroad tracks and come in. So from a development perspective, they want a front door. They want to be able to get their traffic in and get their traffic out. And then anyone who's going southbound on Ridge, when they leave, they got to go all the way around the block to get out. So we're just adding more traffic on the Old Deerfield Road because they have to come down that road. We've heard about all of the concerns with the bike traffic and that. So distributing the traffic is great, but you just don't want to add the circulation of the traffic through the neighborhood, through those streets. So those are the main things. But I just want to reiterate, the full access will operate well, and your consultant has agreed with that analysis. I think one thing we got to remember, while there is some congestion on Old Deerfield Road, none of us are denying that, our improvements at the intersection are significantly improving it. When you look at how the intersection operates now and then compare it to the year 2031 traffic volumes, which includes existing traffic plus other growth, plus the traffic that's going to be generated by the development, the intersection is projected to operate better. That's how much that left turn lane will help the operation of that intersection. So given that, we feel very confident in how that intersection will operate. More importantly, on Old Deerfield Road between Ridgefield and Ridge, that traffic is moving very slow. It's going from one hallway stop to another hallway stop. So, I mean, you're traveling 10, 15 miles an hour at the most, and there'll be times when our traffic has to wait to get out, and the smart guest residents will use the access road. But we need that full access just to provide the development with a gateway entrance, to be able to get guests in there, and to minimize some of that circulation and the additional traffic on Old Deerfield Road. I will be here for more questions as we proceed tonight, but thank you very much.
I would think that a right turn-only entrance on Old Deerfield Road is going to be impossible to achieve because, you know, where are your people going to come from? They have to come from Deerfield Road, get through that weird little intersection at Winthrop, Deerfield, and Devonshire, right there, and then come up the street to make a right into the development.
I don't think you can turn that way.
Right, so I don't know how a write-in, write-up, a write-in only is going to work for that. Okay, any more comments on this particular portion of our discussion, the traffic? Okay. Carl, continue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this is, I have two slides here, actually, there's several intervening with exhibits, but this gets to modifications that are requested by the applicant for their projects. So the first one there, originally, this development was encroaching within the required rear yard along the north, which abuts the commercial properties, and along the east, which runs along the railroad right-of-way. And at the last meeting, the applicant struck the north required rear yard relief, and now the applicant has also struck that required rear yard relief along the east, along the railroad track. And I have a slide on that. The applicant has also struck the separation between building requirement, that's actually a planned development requirement, so that's no longer needed. The height relief is still needed, and I have, I believe, two slides on that. The applicant provided an updated exhibit that was in the packet. Then there's also relief requested to allow no loading spaces, when the requirement would have been two loading spaces. That's a requirement for parking and loading for multifamily developments. Okay, so rear yard encroachments. So the slide has been updated, both of the SNPs from the site plans are from the most recent one that was submitted. So what the applicant has done, so along the north, the relief is actually struck a month ago, but the applicant has increased the setback here from the townhome units to the commercial properties from 25 to 35 feet. I will point out here, it stays the same at 25 feet. And then along the east, along the railroad track, the applicant has increased the setback from, it was 15.1 feet to 25, and so that now complies, and there's no longer relief needed for that. Okay. Height and grade. So this has been talked about in a few meetings before. So the applicant, excuse me, the applicant did provide an updated exhibit. So my understanding is that the high point of this property is towards the north. Of course, that makes sense because you have wetlands and what have you along the west and the south, so this property slopes to the south. So what this is showing, on the bottom right, that shows a line that cuts through the property that's a cross-section, and that cross-section is above it on top. So that's supposed to show how the height relief changes as you go from on the top, which is higher, to on the bottom, which is lower, and then how the relief expands from one to two to three feet to the low point on the site. Again, I will reiterate that the buildings will appear to be 38 feet in height from the sidewalk adjacent to buildings. So if you're standing at any of these buildings, it'll look like it's 38 feet in height. And then this is just another exhibit that the applicant had in there, and you can see how the grade, you know, it cuts through it, so that red line on the bottom is as great as the code defines it, so you can see it's not hitting all the townhome units at the same place because the site's over 28 acres in size and it has slope. And so not all the height relief requested will be the maximum three feet. It will range from three feet to one feet indicative with this cross-section that was provided. And then moving on, these modifications here, I don't think I have any changes to this. There's still some, there's still some details to be worked out. The applicant will need to provide the dimensions and the material and any other information about the signage there. They did identify where the signs are going and the landscaping to be around them, that there'll be ground or monument signs. All right, moving on, because a lot of this is repetitive from a month ago.
Carl, let me have a quick question.
Yes.
So we're making a modification to allow five ground signs and six nine faces. What would be allowed?
Oh, I'd have to follow up with that. I mean, this is, I will say that since this is one site, well, yeah, I'll have to follow up, but it's one site, I don't want to guess, but it's probably like one sign, because, you know, the code doesn't account for like size or scope. It just accounts for like one zoning lot per se.
Right, right.
But I'd have to follow up on that, but I would guess it's only one. Though, and I also, I do want to say one more thing, though, just to get back to modifications and public benefit, because I will come to the public benefit proposal slide here eventually. So these are modific, so, you know, for these projects, you know, we use different words for these things, and these words have meanings, whether it's modification or variance or waiver, these are all things that an applicant can ask or request. And through the planned development section of code, you know, they're called modifications that you can modify the provisions of the zoning code, the subdivision code, or chapter 93, or the streets, the streets and sidewalk code. But for public benefit, for public benefit is very specific to what modifications trigger and shall be reviewed to for public benefit. And so it was the rear yard relief and the height relief. The rear yard relief has been struck, and so now it's just the height relief. So when we get to the public benefit slide, again, the commission needs to be aware that you're looking at that public benefit in relation to the height relief that's being requested, not necessarily the size of the development, not the other variations or the other waivers that are requested, but specifically just to the height relief that's being requested. And so to the extent that the commission has questions about the public benefit or height, that would be very clarifying for staff and the applicant. All right, so in the presentation, I also provided additional information about the Chantilly development. So we had discussed the density before, but now we're discussing density again, which has been revised, and also we're discussing parking, because I know that the commission has discussed if the site is overparked and if more spaces could be turned into greening, to green space, open space. So the density was reduced. So it was 8.4 units per acre, now it's 8.1. So the development proposes 8.1 units per acre. Chantilly on Highway 41 is 7.8 units per acre. And so for parking, for parking, the applicant is proposing 2.98 spaces per unit. I want to point out that my staff report said 2.95 spaces. I think there was an update by the applicant in the intervening week that I posted that packet. So the Chantilly has 2.84 spaces per unit. So I just identified this change several hours ago, I wasn't able to update my math, but the, that would mean that the project is providing on a proportion 4% more total parking spaces or 26 spaces more, actually be just slightly a bit more, because I need to update my math from 2.95 to 2.98. So that information would be slightly old, so it'd be just a little more than 4%, and a little more than 26 spaces, because I know that was something the commission had discussed at prior meetings. This is just my attempt at a side-by-side image. These are not in proportion, I want to point that out. I threw them up, but that does not mean they're in proportion, because the Chantilly site is actually smaller. It's 24 some acres, I believe, is where the 1700 Old Deerfield Road site is, 28.6 acres. And that's just a Google image from Street View of the Chantilly development. This slide, this slide was updated, the image is new, the exhibit is new, and then just the first two bullet points have been updated to indicate the applicant's proposing public access easement for the onsite five-foot wooden trail in the top lot. Otherwise, this slide has information that was presented last June 24th. Okay, public benefit. So again, the building height is what's triggering the requirement for this. So the applicant is proposing to open up that spur access road along the railroad to, looking to improve it and open it up to vehicle access from that end of Ridgefield Avenue. Also proposing 12 public parking spaces along that spur northwest access road to be used by the public, presumably, presumably to be used by the commercial businesses there as they are the most nearby it. The applicant has increased the amount of parking they're offering for the city's police department to use. You can see that I've tracked it as it's gone up through the iterations of the plans, it's now up to 14. The applicant's proposing sharrows on Old Deerfield Road, abutting the site. I actually don't think that was on my presentation on June 24th, but that was a proposal going back to June 24th. And then the applicant is also proposing to improve crosswalks, not abutting the development, Ridgefield Avenue and Cavell Avenue, and then Winthrop Road and Devonshire. And then this slide is actually a reiteration from June 24th, showing what those two intersections are. Those can be considered public benefit, they're not on the site, they don't abut the site, they're not a requirement from code. I know the sharrows do abut the site, but those are not a code requirement, but the sharrows are proposed to go along the site along the streets there. Okay, and then this is a slide I always reiterate. Of course, it's important to always remember the context, the neighborhood, so again, commercial properties to the north, railroad right-of-way to the east, police department, which would be like government institutional use to the northwest, and then along the west and the south, a single-family neighborhood. This slide is old. Again, this is a reminder that there is a one wetland impact on the northwest corner that's, you know, it's been reduced from the original development, the original proposal, there were more. This is also just a reminder to the commission of the site constraints, that along the west and along the south, there are identified wet areas and wetland buffer areas, as well as heritage key and protected trees along the west and along the south. And so again, this is reiterating, the applicant is proposing substantial setbacks along the west and the south to buffer and set back the development from the single-family neighborhood and to maintain those trees and those wetland areas. This has already been reviewed, this fire truck access was reviewed, open space. Oh, so this should be updated, this is actually increased. It's actually, I think it's something over 250,000 square feet now, and that percent has actually increased, it's gone up to 42.5%. So that was in my other slide, but I, forgive me, I failed to update this, but I did remember to comment on it. Parking review, I kind of went through this, I mean, yeah, I mean, they reduced the overall parking spaces, there were, I had the previous slide comparing the Chantilly, just questions on parking, I can certainly take them. Design review, so some of these have been the last few days and then subsequently updated, so I'll have the applicant go through their changes, but I believe they've made some changes to their color palettes. This is the only slide I have on that. I think there was a change in materials, too, as I was looking at this briefly, but again, I will have the applicant go through that. Parking review, so I'll point out, so I will point out on landscaping, so this is an update, the applicant did increase their shade and ornamental trees, and they did increase their total shrubs. I didn't have time to calculate how much more it was, but it was, it was more. Lighting, this is old information that was presented last month, this subdivision, old information that was presented last month, nothing changed there. So they did reduce the units provided, oh, I'd have to double-check if that payment Louis is still accurate. I think it is, but I'd have to double-check that. But the main thing there is that the affordable onsite units proposes decrease from 36 to 35, that makes sense, they decreased the total number of units from 240 to 232. So there was one less affordable site, affordable unit. This was sent out in between, in between June 24th to now, this was sent out to all city departments and utility agencies for additional comments, and I'll send it out again before the next meeting for additional review, just because, you know, there are occasionally changes and what have you, but there's no, there's no objections. Yeah, right. Okay, those are, those are my comments. The commission should reopen the public hearing and take testimony from the applicant as well as the public. If appropriate, direct staff to draft findings of facts or, and/or continue the public hearing. I can take questions, thank you.
Do we have any questions from the commission at this point? Vice Chair Kirk.
So now all the buildings have at least 15 feet of separation?
That's right, and I did double-check that, I had time to double-check that. That is correct, all buildings have at least 15 feet.
And that's the minimum requirement in the code?
In the article, in the PUD code, it is, that's correct.
Is there anything about the RM1 zoning district that would prevent it from hosting a conservation easement?
Is there, is there anything about the RM1 that would prevent...
Why can't a, can a conservation easement be enacted in the RMs?
Oh, it could be for any zoning district, yeah.
And I ask again, why is, why are we having two zoning categories? Why is the R7 being created?
This is the applicant's proposal. Every piece of land needs to be zoned in the city, and so we, I guess, could keep it I, that's its current zoning district, or it could be zoned to some other zoning district, but R7 is consistent with the abutting presidential districts. So you have an R6, an R7, and then the lowest level multifamily is what's being proposed. Could you make that an R6? Sure.
I think the question would be, do we make it all RM1?
Why can't it be R? Why can't it be RM1? It's the exact same outcome, because that land is not going to be developed.
You can, if that's what you recommend.
I'm sorry, it just befuddles me. That's all. Can I, I'd like to talk about the I buffer for a minute. The reason for doing, the reason for proposing that is to not inconvenience the I zoning to the people to the north who may want to build on their sites. Is that correct?
It's not about inconveniencing. It's about the regulatory impact. The applicant is proposing an I strip, which essentially reduces the regulatory impact of the proposed changes on the abutting businesses to the north.
So in theory, if someone were to build and to do, I mean, how, they have a zero setback requirement. Is that correct?
So by straight zoning code, yes. If those northern commercial property, so if this, let's just say hypothetically, this proposal before you was approved and adopted, and it had that I buffer zone along the north, according to the straight bulk table, yes, they would have a zero setback. However, if the development triggered a PUD, then the commission and council would get to consider the adequacy of any setbacks as it would abut a residential development.
But it's not impossible to think that there might be development up to the lot line that is then only now 35 feet from the residential building.
That's right. If they, that's right. If the northern commercial properties were developed in a manner that was, quote-unquote, "by right", without needing a PUD, that's right. They could go up to the property line along the south.
It's likely, yeah.
Unless there's easements there.
Do you, Madam Chair? The applicant seems to want to interject here, so I defer to you.
Yeah, please come up and speak.
My name's Tom Black. It's worn in before.
Okay, please speak into the microphone.
The existing lot has a five-foot utility easement to the north, and it has Commonwealth Edison lines overhead, people's gas lines in the ground, some water lines that feed some fire hydrants and possibly the buildings to the north on the north part of the property line, north of our site. On our site, we have a five-to-a-10-foot utility easement that we're needing to maintain. But separate from that, we've created this 10-foot zone for the benefit of the industrial users to the north.
Okay, thank you. And there's an alley along there, is that correct?
Along the north side of the north properties, but not intervening in between the subject site and the commercial properties.
Okay, thanks.
So just to be clear, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
The zoning strip that we're talking about that is to remain I, that is on the applicant's property. It is not on the abutting properties. The abutting properties aren't changing any zoning. So they can't build into that I zone. It's not their land. I just want to be clear with you.
Right, right.
Just want to make sure that they understand. They can only build to their property line. The property line and the zoning do not coincide, because they are creating a strip along there that's I that has a regulatory effect. But as a practical matter, the people to the north that own property can't build on the I that isn't on their property.
Right.
Does that make sense?
They could, they would have to have 25-foot setback. Go ahead.
That is right.
Well, they'd have a different setback requirement, a regulatory requirement.
You know, forgive me, but my interpretation of the intent of the zoning code is to create at least a minimum 50 feet between residential properties and industrial properties in abutting zones. Am I wrong on that?
Or give them the 25.
That's fair assessment.
I do want to point out, because I didn't have it in my presentation, though it wasn't my staff report, that there is a modification as well for the access points going from the commercial or industrial zone property down to the subject property in the RM1 zoning. And that had been pointed out by a public commentator at the last meeting in June. It wasn't my presentation, but it was in the staff report.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment about the R7 zoning?
Sure.
Okay, to further expand upon Vice Chair Kurt's questions about why R7, why not? Why can't it be all RM1? It could be. It could be left I, it could be RM1. But the specific rationale that I would say is the following. The area that's being developed that is in the RM, it's all in the RM1 zoning district. And so that then dictates the maximum density that, can we go back to that? The maximum density that can be had for the development. And so what staff has said from the beginning is to make that RM1 zoning district, you know, the size that is necessary, only necessary to afford the development rights that are being proposed here, and no greater. And the R7 zoning district was viewed as consistent with the abutting R6 as a step-down zoning district between those two and the, between that district and the RM1. That's the zoning logic behind it. And that's all. They're not taking advantage of any of the density that could be afforded by the R7 zoning district through this plan. It is entirely the RM1 zoning district, which is only a portion of the land that is being utilized where the density proposed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any more questions, Madam Chair? I'm just going to go this way. Commissioner Mantas had a question.
I have two real quick. On the public benefit that you laid out, Carl, I thought I read that the wooded trail in the wetlands that are being preserved was going to be opened up to public access. Is there a reason why that is not considered a public benefit?
Right, so the reason why staff does not have that list as a public benefit is because there's a subdivision code requirement for the property to have a sidewalk along the east side along Ridge Road, which the applicant has said that they're not going to do. So from staff's point of view, that's just kind of like a reason that the applicant can maybe, you know, get that waiver or modification for that requirement. That's why staff has not listed that. It's a public benefit.
Understood, thank you. And then one other question. You brought up units per acre. You compared it to Chantilly. Is there a commonly accepted range, whether it be from architects or urban planners, that a townhouse development in, you know, the modern era should fall within? I tried Googling it, and I got a range of answers that went as high as 25, which seemed like absolutely ludicrous relative to this. So I'm just trying to understand, you know, where we would fall in a theoretical range.
My simple response to that is, I mean, it depends on the community and how it zones and what density that community finds acceptable.
I mean, you know, I mean, there is a hard limit on the size of a unit, right? That, I guess, could be the ultimate decider is what would be marketable. But otherwise, it varies widely, as you pointed out. It just does.
Any more?
That was it. Thank you.
Commissioner Incheck has a? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
My name is Terry Smith, PSB Design. We recently got a project approved with Venpoint in Deerfield. 15 units to the acre, very similar to this one. Two-car townhome, three-story, three-story townhomes, probably similar parking ratio, and very comparable project, about 15 units to the acre.
We're not taking questions from the public yet, so we can hold that question for a few minutes?
Did you say 15 or 50?
1.5, 15. Nationally, you know, we see, you can get higher densities, like with one-car townhomes with very small, maybe smaller units. But it's, you know, like I said, the Deerfield project is, I think, a little more dense than this.
What was the name of the development again? Deerfield?
Deerfield project? Parkway North.
I'm sorry?
Parkway North.
Parkway North.
And where is it located?
Saunders and Parkway North Drive.
And out of curiosity, when did it get approved? Just so I can go find the minutes.
I think it got approved last year. But it's like summer, summer, fall. I think it's under construction or about to get under construction.
Okay. Commissioner Incheck had a question?
Yep, following up on the wooded area and the open space that is being proposed. I was curious. I remembered seeing in the packet that that area would be publicly accessible now as a change from the previous meetings. Is that correct? And if so, is this whole wooded green space accessible to the public, including the tot lot and the dog park? Or can you just specify what's going to be available for public use?
That would be a staff comment as well. The proposed easement area does need to be defined by the applicant.
Katie Jean-Del for the record. So the proposal that we have is to do, or have the tot lot, tot lot, sorry, and the trail be publicly accessible.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So then, would the tot lot be considered a public benefit? That's a question for staff.
Yes, that could be considered a public benefit.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what is actually defined as a public benefit.
That could be, if that's included as the applicant just stated.
First of all, did we answer all your questions? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Nares?
Yeah, question for the staff. I'm struggling to understand, when we're looking at the density, why we're looking at it as the project of a whole of like the 28 and a half acres and trying to compare apples to apples if that area is not being developed or undeveloped or not, we're not able to, they're not able to develop it on and not looking at the numbers based on like the 19 and a quarter that is being zoned RM1. Like from the density numbers.
I can't hear you rephrase the question.
I want to understand like why we're only looking at the the numbers on 28 acres instead of the 19 acres? Because that's really what's being built upon, is the 19 acres, not the 28.
Yeah, but there's 28 acres in the site. At the end of the day, this is going to be one parcel. This is the site. I mean, to take away the open space, including the required open space and not count it toward the density, I'm not quite sure. If you want to calculate that number, we certainly can. But the entirety of the land is in question here, not part of it.
But isn't that area not buildable regardless? Even if they propose to build on it?
Well, not necessarily. So that gets into questions about how you develop the wetlands. I am not a wetland engineer. That's probably a question for the applicant. Now, first of all, I want to caveat this statement that remember, if this development is approved, remember, there's a conservation, conservation easement proposed that would prohibit development within that area. But in general, can wetlands be developed? I'm not a wetland engineer, but to an extent, if you follow laws, to an extent, they can be developed.
I am struggling. If there's, you know, there's like 100-foot easements and all this stuff, like why are we looking, if that is carved out and not buildable, why are we doing the math on things that are not buildable, even if they proposed it? That's all.
I think that's.
I don't know that the zoning code requires it to be removed. That's why. And two, and otherwise, I don't know. If you want to calculate a different area, then we could certainly do that.
Well, yes, so the, right. So when staff does this, we look at the zoning lot, because that's the zoning lot. So that's what it is. The density, if it was only the RM1, it would be 11.64 units per acre if it was just RM1.
Aren't?
No, go ahead.
Aren't there existing mature trees, heritage trees, key trees, and things on the lot that shouldn't be removed from an environmentally friendly standpoint?
Correct, and that's all in that open space area. That's correct. There's, it just gives you a kind of sense. There's heritage key and protected trees. They're identified here. These are things that the community values. As, you know, and there's laws related to wetlands as well. The entire area there is not a wetland. There are portions of that area that are wetlands that have wetland controls that would need to be applied. And if one were to fill wetlands to develop them and things like that, there's various things that one would need to do if that would be approved. But protecting the wetlands, protecting the heritage key and protected trees, and providing that significant a buffer to the existing neighborhood are all things that this community values, that the city values.
When you did the comparison with Chantilly, I assume you used the entirety of the parcel, correct?
That's right.
So it was an apples-to-apples comparison?
That's right. That's right, including that open space that's a part of it, yes.
That's right. And just to clarify, I guess, the R7, the proposed R7, right, for this development, part of its wetlands, part of its heritage trees, but technically, it's not deemed unbuildable. You know, but for, you know, heritage trees being in the way, and obviously, as, you know, some of us have been on the ZPA, no need of variance for that.
It has build, it has difficulties for development.
It challenges, but was it designated as unbuildable per our code?
No, there is, we don't have a designation of unbuildable. Things may be turned out to be unbuildable with the confluence of various regulations. But no, we don't have that.
Yeah, it has development rights. It's just, it would be more difficult to develop it. And, you know, what does that mean, development rights? Right, given the heritage trees and wetlands? But there's still some development that could occur. There is some development rights.
Well, I think the, people get confused when they're not, if they're not thinking about the entire 28 acres as being part of the calculation for the density. I think they're just thinking, oh, I'm standing around all these buildings, and it's really crowded, it's too dense. But, you know, if you're looking at Chantilly, that looks a lot more dense to me if I were, you know, having to pick. So I do think that is the whole, we have to take the whole lot into consideration when we're talking about the density. And, you know, like you said, the city has chosen, and the citizens of the city have made it clear that we want to save certain parts of our wetlands, of our forestry. And to save those things, it requires kind of consolidating the building in a smaller portion of a site.
Chair, if I may?
Oh, yes, please.
So if the question is whether it's possible to build on wetlands, that's pretty much regulated by the Lake County Watershed ordinance. And so it's not a straight yes or no. It is governed, it's regulated by all of the various standards and permitting requirements that Lake County would require. And so I don't know that, I certainly have not looked into what extent you could build into those wetlands, but I don't think it's a straight no. I think it is a subject to whatever the requirements of the ordinance.
Right, there would be extra rules. You have to do this, you have to do this other thing.
Yeah, there's various other types of things, like replication and other types of exchanges that could.
All right, well, I think we've wandered off into the weeds with that one. Yes. Come from a long line of honey people. Okay, any more comments on that? Okay, any more comments on that? Does everybody have their answer for this?
I have a portion of the, yes, give me. Could you put the previous slide back up with the, that, yeah. I, I was wondering, and it's sort of related to commissioners' questions about density and whatnot, the, the triangular space, what are those units there? Rowhouse 19 and 23, I think, that it's in front of? I, I was wondering, was it, was it an issue of, I assume it was an issue of parking spaces, but why the, the, the club and, and pool, why that whole area didn't become a larger green space that incorporated the pool and the, and the clubhouse? But I'm assuming it had to do with parking, but I didn't know if you could pick up parking somewhere else.
Does someone from the applicant have an answer to that?
And, and not have that road.
Yeah, one of, one of the, again, we're trying to balance a lot of things here, and one of the requirements is life safety and access of fire and emergency vehicles around the buildings. So to answer your question, you know, we had to, we have to maintain some circulation around that building just to, you know, to help, to help facilitate fire truck access to, to a few of those buildings that are around the club, so.
Well, and I assume that the club, I think our requirement is that the club has to be like centrally located in the development for equal access, for the most part, for everybody in it, is that correct?
And we've also added that triangular part to the south, it made sense to have some connection to it. And like, to your point, that we centrally located the club, so as you drive in, any, you know, the club will also serve, serve as a leasing function, so any, any potential visitors can easily get to the club and not have to work their way through the entire development trying to find it.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, could the, could the speaker just state his name, please?
Terrence Smith.
Thank you.
Thanks, we didn't get that. Councilmember Ross, did that answer your question?
That answered my question, thank you.
Okay. I have a, oh, Commissioner Henry.
You know, I think, I think we're getting into the weeds by comparing these two photographs of, of Chantilly and, and the proposal, because they're not to scale, as Mr. Burrhop said at the beginning. That being said, I think where Mr., where Commissioner Nannas was going was if you draw a line around where the buildings are, the 19 acres, it's probably denser in and of itself. And what staff has explained, whether, whether we like it or not, frankly, is that you have, we have to take the whole property, not just that area that, that is, is being developed specifically. Although I think it is something we need to keep an eye on in terms of, of density. I think density is something we do need to be concerned of, but we need to keep in perspective, I think.
For sure, and Chantilly was certainly approved well before any of us got here.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
My comment doesn't go to that the commission can't consider density, I just want to be clear about that. It's just that the, the applicant is proposing this use for the entirety of the property, which includes open space, some of which is required and others of which exceeds our requirements. That's all I'm trying to say.
No, that's fine, and I do know that for developments in the past, not necessarily in Highland Park, but there was a trend toward, and there's one up in Gray's Lake, toward maximizing the open space and consolidating all the houses, so that houses maybe have, you know, front porches, garages and such that it, it made it a more community feel. And then there was green space on the outside to, to, rather than have big yards, you had a big green space that people could share. And that was a trend some years ago. Go ahead, Director.
One other thing, I mean, the PUD consideration before you're in the clustering of homes and the allowance with that flexibility is the very thing that the PUD is, is meant for, to basically deal with the trade-offs that are inevitably necessary when you do have environmentally sensitive areas, that you are trying to avoid from development.
Right.
And so then that leads to the clustering in the portion that is not as sensitive or not sensitive in this case. And so that will yield a greater density for that portion, but the idea is the benefit for the community is that those other places that are sensitive are spared development, and that's an important trade-off, and it is contemplated in our code.
Absolutely.
Again, the commission, it's just that this is contemplated as part of the code to have the distribution of development differ based on the unique needs of particular parcels that are trying to be developed.
Okay, thank you. I had a question about the parking, because one of the modifications we were making was not allowing two loading spaces, is that per building?
Total, for the whole development.
For the whole development, would only have two spaces for loading?
That's right.
It does seem with, almost three spaces per unit, that I think, you know, we kind of, I guess we kind of had that covered, even though they're not.
Yes, we, staff doesn't have a concern with that, that, that relief request. You know, in, in the, the building form that they're, they're proposing, you know, there, there would be loading and unloading of moving trucks that would occur in front of the home or on the driveway and such. The commission thought that there should be additional loading spaces elsewhere, you could designate them, but it's not really practical in this building form and design, so I would recommend against that.
There should be plenty of room. So, okay, do we have any more questions or concerns for staff? Does staff have anything else they need to present?
No, that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we do remind the commission that there is, there are additional pieces of information related to design review, and that we would encourage the commission to hear from the applicant on that, because staff has not finished its review of those items. But changes have been made, staff has provided input from that, from the commission and from staff as to the need to make some changes to those elements, and they are provided here for presentation tonight, the results of that feedback.
Okay. The applicant like to come up and further their presentation.
Good evening, again, for the record, Katie Jinkydale with the law firm of Philly Piper. I represent the applicant in this matter. So, staff, as usual, did a great job summarizing kind of where we are today, but we wanted to, in addition to providing some of those additional details that Director Fontaine just mentioned, kind of run through, from our perspective, the changes and how we've incorporated community feedback to date. You can go ahead and advance to the first substantive slide. Sure, thank you. Oh, I'll just stay still. So one, one piece of feedback that we had heard was about community input and feedback that we, or feedback and how it's been incorporated. So we wanted to remind the commission, some who may have not been here six, seven years ago, that this site has a long history with many iterations proposed on it, since Solo Cuffs vacated the site and current ownership took it on. So in 2018, that included a multifamily development shown on the far left side with over 500 units proposed. There's higher density, a large apartment building that you can kind of see in the far, the top of that. I mean, there were a lot of community concerns around the scale, the number, the 500 units, traffic, et cetera. Ownership, current ownership, not the applicant, went back, as a reminder, the site is currently zoned industrial, so they came back in 2023 with an industrial project that complied with the existing industrial zoning in all respects but for needing the planned development. I wasn't here, my colleague was here, and there were 150 people in the room, and we heard them loud and clear that the existing zoning was not the preferred use, and it, so they went back out to try to find a more, or a more compatible one that responded to the feedback, which is where the current application came, came to be. We currently, or we currently are at 232 units. When we first had our initial community meeting back in the fall of 2024, it was very well attended, it was held downtown at the theater, and it was a very well-received plan with the 262 units, which of course has been reduced since then. But we also heard other things that were important to the community, such as preserving that eight acres of wetlands, which it should be noted could be built on, it would just require an additional process, including like the city attorney mentioned, review by the various jurisdictions that have purview over that. We also heard from neighbors about parking concerns from the police, as well as neighbors the north of us. And then also, we heard pretty overwhelmingly that providing additional housing options, including the affordable onsite as opposed to a fee and low, are very important. In addition to that, and of longer history, since the last, or in the last three meetings, we've heard about concerns about the relief requested, the density, the, and the public benefits that correspond with that. So we sharpened our pencils, put Terry and his team back to work, and eliminated a lot of the relief required. That includes all the setbacks on the north and the east, the separation between buildings, and then we also have eliminated, and I know this was a last minute change, but we no longer need the foundation planting bed relief that was previously provided. So we've been able to reconfigure what is a very challenging and complicated site and eliminate those four areas of relief that were required. The ones that are left, which we can go into later tonight, are mostly related to the uniqueness of this site. So we double-checked, and we would typically be allowed one sign on this entire site. We think we need at least two identifiers, and then the other signs are proposed for that shared parking lot with the easement holder to the north to make it very clear what parking spaces are publicly accessible there and which ones are allocated to him and his users. The product type, I don't have a loading dock in my home, and I think that we, I think that no one needs a loading dock in a townhome. So that is just based on the product type, and then the site topography, which we'll go into, Carl did a great job summarizing that, but we have a couple exhibits that we can go into further detail on as well. So again, just wanting to underscore the, how we are listening to community feedback. So we heard reduce the density, we have reduced the units since the original neighborhood meeting two times. We've also removed parking in response to feedback that we've heard from this commission, which again, like I mentioned back in June, is difficult here, because we're also hearing from some of the area users that they're concerned about parking and the availability of parking. We also have always heard from the very beginning that landscaping trees and open space were very important, so we have almost tripled the amount of shrub is needed, and we have 53% more trees than would be required. We have that wetland conservation easement, and there were concerns at the first meeting about that, so we worked with staff to confirm that that would be codified, recorded on the plat in perpetuity. And then we also added that additional park at the center that Terry mentioned. We heard about the designs being monotonous and there not being enough diversification between them. We'll go through it, but we're now up to 19 different building types across 49 buildings. We also added additional architectural detailing and colors that we will go through very shortly. We repeatedly heard a desire to have access to that wood chip blocking path. It's about a quarter of a mile, the walking path, that we think will be a great, maybe not public benefit, but community amenity, I guess I will call it. And we worked with our potential partners to get them comfortable with allowing for that public access that was asked for. We were a little uncomfortable with it at first, but we are now going to accommodate it. And of course, we talked about the tot lot as well. And then finally, the increased setbacks, and, you know, addressing northern property feedback. Already went through those with the increased setbacks, adding that parking that was requested by one of the neighbors to the north. We've spent a lot of time working with the easement holder, and I think we're getting very close to addressing all of his concerns. And then I know we've been talking about that industrial buffer. Again, it's currently industrial, so we're just looking to leave that and leave them, those neighbors to the north kind of in the same position that they would be in if we continue to develop the site with industrial, which we again heard from the community is not the desire, but we're open, again, we thought that we were doing that as a, a give, but we would be open to your feedback there. Most of these have been touched on, but again, the public benefits have been updated to allow that public access to the trail and the tot lot. We do have those off-site improvements that were requested by the park district between the May and June meetings that we were able to accommodate, and then helping try to alleviate parking concerns in the area. Separate from that, and I know that they aren't public benefits to offset the height increase that we're requesting, but we don't think that it should be ignored that there are a multitude of benefits to the community with the development, including those traffic improvements that are needed today without anything happening on the site, as well as the important affordable housing, which I know we, was talked about in staff's presentation, but since the June meeting, one update was we did get unanimous approval from the housing commissioner, or commission on the affordable housing proposal. I think with that, I will turn it over to Terry to go through some of those site changes that I mentioned since June.
Thank you, Katie. Again, my name's Terry Smith with BSB Design. You know, a lot of these, these things have been discussed so much, so I'm going to try to be as brief as I can, but obviously, the, the biggest change this time from, from previous is the, in the site plan, is the reduction of, of density to our plan, whereas before we were at 240 units, we reduced the, the unit count by, by eight total to 232. This afforded us to do several things, most notably, to take it to the next slide, Carl. We've, we now have the adequate required buffers along the north property line and along the railroad tracks, along the, along the east. Along the north property line, I believe we had a 20-foot setback proposed previously, whereas now we are proposing along the predominant property line, 35 feet, which is 10 more than required, and then 25 feet where the property comes down, that, that extended piece of, of parking from the north, from the industrial area, we're maintaining a 25-foot separation to that. Then along the railroad tracks, whereas, whereas previously we had a 15-foot buffer or setback proposed, now we're at the required 25-foot setback. Next slide, just go through the next one, go to the site plan now. Just want to say a little something about the, about that, that, that industrial easement. Keep in mind that industrial easement or that industrial zone land is, is existing, the entire site is currently zoned industrial. We're not creating that industrial zoning, it's already in place, and we're leaving a five to 10-foot strip along that north property line for, for reasons that were discussed previously. Another change to the plan, obviously, is the reduction of, of parking spaces. One of the requests, I think, from the commission previously was an under, a better understanding of the parking that was shown in the density table, and my apologies, it was a little confusing, because I, we combined all the parking, but in the current submittal packet, we have separated out the, the parking that's exclusive to the, to the residential, which is a total of 690 spaces, and below the line, we've also included additional parking that's not exclusive to the residential, that includes the public parking lot of 14 spaces, the 28 spaces for the industrial user that we have to provide by easement, and the 12-foot spaces along the, the access drive that were previously, previously mentioned. Another aspect of, of, of reducing the number of units that it did, as discussed earlier, allow us to add more landscaped area around the buildings. We're able to eliminate the need for the, for the variance, for the, for the, for the narrow landscaped beds, now they're, they're at the required five feet. We are also able to provide just, in certain areas, more landscaped area around the buildings in general, and then along the drives, most notably along the drives in front of the club, that east-west drive, we're able to add more tree islands. So that was a, an important change to the plan. We also, as, as, as mentioned previously, were able to eliminate the variance of building separation, whereas before we had 12-foot, we requested a relief of the 15-foot requirement. We're now meeting that, building to building separation of, of 15 feet. That's, for the most part, and we, we also made some, some, some changes and some alterations to the building architecture, and I'll, Natalie from BSB, talk through that.
Thank you, Terry. I'm Natalie Viscuso, and I'm with BSB Design. We are the architecture firm on board for this project.
Natalie, have you been sworn in before?
At the first meeting, yes.
Okay.
Bear with me a moment, I'm trying to figure out this pointer. Let's see, okay. So we wanted to take a moment to kind of drive through the, the overview of the architecture as we started in February and then where we ended up today. So this first slide shows four 3D renderings, which was what we proposed back in February when we started the architecture portion of the project. We had two color palettes shown, and the front load versus rear load building type shown here. And based on feedback from staff as well as the commission, we were told that we wanted to see more variation and more architectural detail. Moving ahead to the May meeting, we changed the color palettes. Moving ahead to the May meeting, we changed the color palettes. They're a bit skewed on this screen, I will say. We went to a warmer color palette, three different color palettes across the board. The top left image is a more cobblestone with charcoal and then gray accents. The image to the right, upper right, is a navy blue and pewter with cobblestone color palette. And then the bottom left is a more subdued cobblestone and pewter and tan combination. The site plan to the lower right was how we started to delineate color across the site. And again, this was back in May. We had three different zones of color palettes and color distribution across the site. The left side had the first color palette, which is the upper left. The middle zone was the, the bottom left color palette and then the upper right of that site plan was all the blue color palette. And the feedback to this was that we wanted more color distribution across the site and then also another layer of architectural detail. Another difference from this iteration to the original was that we added porches to all the units. Originally, the end units had porches and the middle units did not. And other than that, the architecture was the same across all three color palettes. The difference was just the colors of the materials. Our current plan shows a much more smaller grouping of color across the site. We still have three color palettes, which we feel is very appropriate for this size site, and we have smaller groupings across the site. So when you drive through the site, you're experiencing every color palette as you drive through and it breaks down the scale and is much more interesting to drive through the site, in our opinion. We have a combination of front load and rear load townhome buildings, and so that in itself creates different architectural massing and detailing. The six renderings that you see here are just a sampling of what will actually be provided. The architectural characteristics and color palettes will be consistent throughout, but here we're showing four unit assemblies. We also have five unit and six unit assemblies in addition to that for a total of 19 variations across 49 buildings. And so we feel pretty good about that mix of architecture. We feel it's appropriate for the size site and breaks up the monotony. Here's a close-up of our latest iteration of architecture, just a few of the renderings, not every building type, but just a sampling. What we added in this iteration was we went back to a more contemporary, cool, white, gray and blue color palette with engineered wood column accents and standing seam metal porch roofs. We also added a shed roof awning detail at the end units of the white and black palette as well as the gray color palette. The middle units of the white and gray palettes also have a complex eve return at the middle unit gables, just to break up that roof line and add another level of architectural detail. Another thing that we wanted to incorporate would be different porch treatments, just to break up that pedestrian level, I think is appropriate for the architectural style. We also overlay gable roof. So the bottom right image shows a shed roof with an overlay gable, which ties in with the architecture of that center unit that has the eve return with the gable. So all these elements, we believe, work very harmoniously together. We also wanted variation in materials between the palettes. So the blue color palette does incorporate a, a shingle engineered siding in the blue. The white palette and the gray palette has a panel and trim detail at the end units as well as in the gables of the center units at the front load buildings. It was important to us to have variety from unit to unit. We didn't want every unit to be the same exact design, but we wanted to introduce cohesive elements across the board to have one unified development, but also differentiation in And I'd just like to touch on a, an example of a front load garage building shown here. And we have the front elevation as well as the rear elevation and we wanted to point out here that detail is applied and designed to all four sides of the building. This is not just a front elevation design architecture. We have the same architectural detail and materials at all four sides of the building. We thought that was important. So it's not that you only look at the front of the building and that's the best view. We want the buildings to be attractive on all four sides. And then here's another example of a rear load or rear garage building, again, with similar architectural detail at the front and the back of the building. And we don't have pictured here, but the sides are similar as well. This is a rendering of our proposed clubhouse and we did a previous iteration in that warmer tan color palette. This is the latest update with the high contrast contemporary white with charcoal and mid-range gray and then the engineered wood column accents. And I don't believe we previously presented the floor plan, but it's worth noting the different amenities that will be offered in this development, including fitness, spa, sauna, steam room, leasing, and then a social party lounge area in addition to a pool with One thing that we went back and forth on how to best explain would be the height variance request that we are seeking. And this is a large site at 28.6 acres and essentially from a pedestrian standpoint, the site is flat. The, and I turned the site here just so we could fit it on the page, but it's actually rotated to the counterclockwise direction. So off of Old Deerfield Road, that's the highest point of the site and then it slopes down to the southeast. We wanted to point out that there is a three-foot grade change from the entrance, so the upper northwest corner to the lower southeast corner of the site, and that's across about a quarter of, a quarter of a mile. And so just to kind of put that in perspective, that kind of, that translates to about a one-foot grade change at every 440 feet or a one-inch grade change at every 36 feet. So it's pretty minimal, but we still do have to factor that into our, our height variance request. And so I'm going to get a little more into that here. If you go back to this slide, that black line that I'm cutting through shows where I'm cutting a, kind of a site section. And so this exhibit here, Carl had a, an overall section that we provided. We thought it was a little hard to read, so we broke it out into smaller sections so we could zoom in and show a little more detail. So the, the top portion shows the highest point on the northwest side of the site, so the entrance to the site. That portion of the site, the finished grade or finished floor elevation will be around 655. We had, the engineer had, had to calculate the average existing grade for the site across the entire 28 acres and that is at 652 for an elevation. So our height variation request, the buildings have to be measured from 652, even if they're not placed at 652. So in some cases, this adds three feet, arbitrary feet to our building measurement. So that, that box on the upper left, where you see the three-foot dimension underneath the building to that average existing grade red dash line, that's what we're trying to depict here. And that extra three feet isn't actually the building. The buildings are 38 feet, but we do have to factor in the average existing grade of a 28-acre site in our height dimension. So I just want to point that out and emphasize that. The middle exhibit is taken from the center of the site, so the majority of those buildings are located at an elevation of 653. And so in that case, we have average existing grade about one foot below the top of slab for those buildings. And then the building height in that case is two feet higher than the actual structured building height. And then similar for the buildings on the, the low part of this slide, this is the southeast side of the site where the buildings will actually be located closer to the average existing grade of 652 or 653. And so in that case, we either are adding three feet to the building height, or I'm sorry, we're not adding three feet to the building height, but we're measuring from the average existing grade all the way to the right and then we have to add three feet in that case. The other one, we just have, we have to add a foot from the average existing grade to the finished slab and then add another two feet to the building height. Hope I didn't make that too confusing. The next slide, we wanted to point out the reason graphically for the height variation request, and this is due to a handful of reasons, but I've been working at the firm that I'm at for 11 years and we almost always do nine-foot ceilings. In a luxury product, we also propose 10-foot ceilings at the main living level, but nine minimum is what we've done for the past 10 years, probably longer than that. I'd have to defer to someone that's been with the firm longer. But what we're proposing are nine-foot ceilings at the first floor and third floor and then the second living, second floor living level, which would have the kitchen and living room, we're proposing 10 feet. This allows for enhanced volume, much more natural light and a much more generous living space as well as long-term stability for the community. The graphic on the left is showing an additional three feet that we have to add to that average existing grade dimension. So you're seeing the 38-feet dimension to the mean roof height from grade. And then the red dash line shows the additional three feet that we have to add as measuring from average existing grade. So we just want to point that out and emphasize. The buildings are not actually 41 feet tall, but we do have to factor in average existing grade. That's what's shown here. Next, I will hand the presentation over to Jeff, the landscape architect.
My name is Jeff Torrens. I'm a landscape architect with Dixon Design Studio. We've heard about how it seems like everything we've presented is from 3,000 feet in the air. So we put our renders to work to create a couple of slides to help us visualize what the entry and streetscape may look like from the street level. The entry will have a double-sided monument in the entry island surrounded by ornamental grasses and perennials. In the distance, you'll see our landscape feature island, which is going to be burned up to a height of about three feet and planted with a colorful mix of evergreens, deciduous trees, shrubs, ornamental grasses and perennials. This is a view of the streetscape as we move further into the, into the project. The landscaped island is now behind us. To the right are our front-loaded garage townhomes and to the left and in the distance, you can see the fronts of the rear loaded row homes. Here we can start to see how the parkway trees and the foundation plantings are starting to come together to provide a fairly accurate depiction of the streetscape. This slide shows how our combined efforts to decrease density, increase buffers and cut back on the parking resulted in more opportunities for parkway trees. Blue squares indicate areas where we were able to add additional parkway trees compared to our initial planned submittal. These 16 additional landscaped islands allow for more shape to help soften and complement This looks complicated, but it's really, it's really quite simple. We have summarized our tree and shrub counts to demonstrate how we have always provided a significant number of trees and shrubs beyond code requirements. The first column shows the number of replacement trees required to offset our tree removals. The second column indicates how many trees and shrubs are planted or are required for vehicular use areas and foundation plantings per code. And the third column indicates proposed trees and shrubs that are beyond the code requirements. Top section indicates where we stood for the initial planned submittal and the second section is where we are under the current plan. At the bottom of the slide is a comparison between the two plans. As you can see, the percentage of trees and shrubs provided exceeded code in the beginning and it has continued to increase to where we are now with the current plan. Despite tree removals, as well as the majority of the wetlands in the one large open space, where there's a gap in the trees and lands, we've added a playlot and a woodland trail, which will allow access to residents and public. This exhibit shows our proposed monument sign locations. Please note that we have relocated the access road sign to the east side of the street due to the addition of parallel parking for our neighbors to the north along the west side of the street. This exhibit has been updated due to changes in our setbacks and standards. Our minimum side-to-side separation was previously 12 feet. Now that we have 15 feet, we can meet the five-foot wide minimum foundation planting bed requirement. But we would base it on an average width so that we can provide better screening of the air conditioning units and the gas and electric meters, which are on the sides of the buildings. In the bottom left, you can see how our increased setbacks allowed us to add shade trees to the north and east buffers, which will help provide better screening of the industrial uses and the railroad tracks. Thanks for your time. That's all I have. Turn it back over to Katie.
Michael Worthman again with KLA. Just going to give you a quick synopsis. Carl? Oh, I got the clicker. I'm sorry about that. Okay, we're skipping a couple of slides to save time. Once again, Michael Worthman with KLA. Just want to give a couple of study highlights. As you've heard, the proposed development will generate similar if less, or if not less traffic than the prior use of Solo Cup or many uses that could be developed under the existing zoning, the existing industrial zoning. More importantly, the townhome development will generate less truck traffic than the Solo Cup property did or any potential manufacturing use. As we've talked about, the roadway system has more than sufficient reserve capacity to accommodate the additional traffic generated by the proposed development. All of the intersections are operating at good levels of service A, B, or C. As we've talked about, the access system will provide efficient access to and from the development. We went through that before. And then lastly, as you can see on the right, is the civil tech letter indicating that they have no more comments and that we have addressed all their comments and have no further comments on the plans, traffic study, information or the findings of the traffic study. So we're in agreement with your third-party consultant. Some of the improvements that we are providing, and we've talked about this a number of times, roadway upgrades at the intersection of Richfield and Old Deerfield include new left-turn lanes on both approaches of Old Deerfield at Richfield. In addition, we're increasing that radius in the southwest corner as you come from Richfield to go south on Old Deerfield Road. That's where you have a lot of the bus traffic, so we're increasing that radius so that bus traffic can make the turn much easier. And then per the request of the city and the police department, we will be providing a new access drive to the police station on Deerfield Road. And then the multimodal enhancements, your complete street enhancements, a number of those. New sidewalk along the site frontage on Old Deerfield Road. We're providing pedestrian crossings at four intersections, two of them that are adjacent to our site, that's at Old Deerfield and Richfield on the south leg of the intersection. And then at Ridge and Devonshire, we will be providing a crosswalk on the north approach. And then for the, to meet your complete streets requirements, we're looking at putting crosswalks at two other locations, Richfield with Harvell and then Winthrop with Devonshire. And both of those serve parks. And then lastly, we're proposing bike sheroes and signage on Old Deerfield Road along our frontage and along the railroad access road. Next is, this is just a slide of the proposed improvements along Old Deerfield Road. To the right is the existing condition, to the left is the proposed conditions. Shows the additional left-turn lanes, the crosswalk, the increased radius. The table on the bottom shows the average delay at the intersection based on existing the townhome development and then the proposed previous industrial development. And what we want to get out of here is that with the townhome development and the proposed improvements, we will actually be decreasing the overall delay at this intersection. improvements, we will actually be decreasing the overall delay at this intersection. We're actually enhancing the operation of the intersection of Richfield with Old Deerfield Road. And I will be around for further questions. Are we done? Thank you.
All right. Anybody else from the applicant who wishes to speak? Does anyone on the commission have a question for the applicant?
I have a few questions.
Sure, go ahead, Commissioner Fattner.
This is going more towards the architecture and design. First, I appreciate the modifications, right, and some concessions. I'm starting to get a little bit more comfortable than I was on day one, so I appreciate that. Thank you. It was said that there are 19 different building types. Can you just, I mean, what difference, you know, building type one, building type, like, what, what, what do you guys use as, you know, definition of one type? Because 19 sounds like a lot, but it may just be minor, minor changes.
So I don't want it to seem like we have 19 different variations that are completely different, but 19 goes to the different type of unit assemblies and the color palettes. And so here we have four examples of different color palettes and assemblies. I would consider this four different building types. We also have combination of five-unit buildings for the front load and the rear load, in addition to six-unit buildings for the front load and the rear load. And so all of those different combinations together included with the three color palettes, total 19. So building assemblies and then color palettes.
Each one's a different type.
Exactly.
The coloring, that's where you get all the different.
Yes, different massing and scale. Exactly.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
And then I have a question regarding the traffic study.
Well, we have Natalie up. Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, of course.
Because this, so we have this building down on the lower right, and the middle porch cover has two gables on it, and I'm worried that that's going to catch debris in that middle valley there. Is that going to be an issue?
What we would do there, that's a double porch.
Okay.
And so we wanted each overlay gable to be centered on the front door. And what we would do there is a saddle roof in between the two gables to shed everything.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Of course.
Okay, so can we bring up?
Traffic.
The traffic person again, yes.
Thank you. So my question is more on, on the bike traffic. We've talked about this before in past meetings and whatnot, and I see you've added bike sheroes, right? Is that what those are?
Yeah.
So based on your opinion, you know, knowing that there is bike traffic coming through here, you added a lane now, right, turning lane, it sounds like as well. I just want to hear, you know, confirmation or commitment that this is now going to alleviate any potential, you know, increase, increased traffic that would impact the bikes, then the bike traffic. We have a lot of bicyclists, I've said that before. They go to the bike path, they're going to go down Ridge and hang a right down Richfield and head to the paths. So based on your assessment now with adding the different items of traffic, whether that's turning lanes, or whether that's opening up our circulation, can you speak a little bit more as far as what that's going to be, you know, how, how our bicyclists are not going to negatively impacted by the development now?
So we're trying to add additional infrastructure to accommodate that with the sheroes and the signage, which will be similar to what you have on Ridge Road. The volumes and the turning conflicts that we have here is similar to many other locations that you have within the city. There's other locations that carry higher volumes. For instance, right out here, you have sheroes, which is a bike route that goes across 80, or across 41, keeps on going, which carries much higher volumes at higher speeds. So I think what we're proposing is similar to what you have at other locations within the city. As we all know, as a bicyclist, you need to be a defensive driver. You need to be watching and seeing what's going on. There's already one access drive or two access drives on Old Deerfield Road now, serving the restaurant. And then there's the old drive that served the Solo Cup. We're just replacing that Solo Cup drive with our drive. And as you drive up and down any road, there's always access drives or other intersections and so forth. And I, I think one of the keys that we have, particularly the section along our frontage, is you got those two always stops. So the traffic speeds in that area are very low, and while there is some turning movements and so forth, you just can't get going really fast in that section, which really helps from, you know, an efficiency standpoint.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, stay up there, please. We have another traffic question from Commissioner Vantus.
Apologies, I should have asked this during the staff presentation, but I get a second bite at the apple. So at the last meeting, we talked about the police station, and specifically there being a new ingress and egress point at kind of the tip of, of their parking lot. I, we haven't discussed that at all today. Is that now being taken out of consideration?
Oh, sorry, Director Fontaine has a question, and I do think it's.
It's not a question, I just wanted, the question is to the applicant, but I just wanted to make mention that is the city that requested the applicant include that police exit entrance to that part of the property.
But we're not, that, that is no longer being considered because it wasn't?
I defer to the applicant. I just want to make sure the origin of that.
It's still proposed. It's still per the request of the city. We have, we'll have to all go through Lake County to get that approved, Lake County Department of Transportation. And my understanding is it's going to be for police use only. So it will be a limited use, just providing a quicker access for them when they need to leave the station.
And remind me, because, so I've been ruminating or marinating on this. My son goes to daycare right across the street, and it is incredibly hard for me to turn left out of the opposite side of that, and I just, I can't see how that works. That was because there was going to be something to do with the current existing driveway at the police station on Old Deerfield. Is that correct? Like, what was the rationale for moving that ingress and egress, excuse me, to Deerfield Road?
I will, yeah, I will defer to the city because that was.
It's not moving it, it's introducing an entrance and exit to Deerfield. It's not moving it, it's an additional. Correct. Police chief requested that that be part of the development proposal.
It seems like a complex place to do that, but I guess that's beyond my pay grade.
It's for police operations and movements only.
So it'll be down there on the south side? Okay.
Yep.
This is the police department property here. Then down all the way on the south end of the property, on the west side, along Deerfield Road, right here, introducing an access point only for police department use. So they have direct access to get their police vehicles up to the street.
And it will be appropriately signed and cross-tatched on the, the road as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I? Oh, Councilmember Ross.
Thank you, Chair. Piggyback on that and second bite at the apple. The, in, in the staff report that started the meeting, there was mention of the access road being considered and, and then not, not made a part of this project, that off of Ridge Road at, at the southern end of the site. And I, I wondered, I assume that's roughly where an access road would, would have, would, would be built. And could, could it be explained why it, it was, would not be beneficial to, to traffic flow to have an access point there? Even, I mean, if, if, I, I do understand that neighbors might be upset at having an access road there. My, I'm sort of thinking that perhaps it could be, you know, initially or long-term just for emergency vehicle access to the southern end of the, the site. But I, I was wondering why it wouldn't, why the assessment was that it wouldn't help traffic.
Well, those are two questions, whether it's an emergency access issue or not. Chief and I reviewed that. We do not think it's necessary from emergency access point of view. Whether it'll improve traffic or not, the traffic engineer did opine on that matter and had a statement that our third-party reviewed and didn't have any opposition or provision to. We could read it back, I believe, because somebody actually had it posted up at one point in the presentation. I would defer to the applicant on that, but that was looked at.
Just to be clear, we're talking about an access to Ridge Road?
Access to Ridge Road at Devonshire somewhere.
Like out of the south end of the development.
One of the concerns there was to deal with, was having to do with the wetland there that would need to be crossed, and the traffic benefits were indicated to be minor.
Yeah. Just to indicate once again, wetland concerns going through the pristine woodland area that we're trying to maintain at this location. Further, why would provide some relief, and I can't deny that, only a small percentage of our traffic is projected to be coming to and from the south on Ridge. You got to take Ridge a long way south until you get to a major road before see more of our traffic getting to Old Deerfield or to Deerfield Road or to 41 up to the north of us. So why, it would provide some additional distribution. Just to put it through the wetlands is a challenge, and I think we, as a, as a staff and as a team, we were trying to maintain that wooded area and not provide any access through there. And I don't know if staff wants to opine anymore.
No, I mean, that's, this is the statement that was drawn from their reports, and just marginally reduce traffic on Old Deerfield Road. We have the traffic analysis, it shows the levels of service. We could pull that up again. We're talking about a reduction from, what was it, 270 feet to 110 feet stacking going left, 95th percentile means that 95% of the time, it's going to be less than that. If I'm wrong, please correct me. So that's, the, the fact that it's not necessary from an emergency access point of view, marginal improvements in traffic, the level of service at these intersections, that's why we would have to fill a wetland, reduce the number of trees over there, and then make a connection to Devonshire that would, you know, cause that to be an intersection that would need to be probably controlled as well in terms of stop signs.
All right, thank you. Do we have any more questions from the commission? Commissioner Henry has a question.
I'm not sure who to address this to, probably council. My first question is, I noticed that this plan, or whatever iteration of this plan we ultimately come to, is scheduled to be built in three phases. As members of my colleagues on the commission knows, we've been dealing with a situation where a project was scheduled to be built in two phases. Phase one was back in 2006 or '07, as I recall, and phase two didn't happen for another, well, it's happening now, which created a number of different issues. My question is, well, it's a couple of questions. One, do you have any idea if some iteration of this plan is ultimately recommended to the council, and the council ultimately approves it, what does that phasing look like in terms of time? And coupled with that is, where are these inclusionary, the 35, I think, is 36 inclusionary units, do we have any idea where they're going to be and what they're going to look like? As I said, I, I only address it to council because I'm a lawyer, I talk to lawyers, that's what I do.
Do you mean application, applicant's council you're referring?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, not Marcus.
Not that we don't want to hear.
Not that we don't want to hear. Probably doesn't know much more about it than I can.
So our hope is to do this as one, one phase, but in talking with staff, they asked us to just show if it were to, you know, not be able to proceed all at once, what that phasing would look like, where we would start, where we would end. But our goal is to start, you know, start and complete all in one phase. That helps us with, well, we're developers, it doesn't help us to have undeveloped land that doesn't have families on it or residents on it. But this is if we needed to phase it, what it would look like. We would work, of course, with council, like we always do, city, the city council, as far as the development agreement, to make sure if it did stall out, that there would be an interim condition required. I'm fairly certain, having dealt or worked with the city attorneys in the past in other municipalities as well. As far as the affordable units, those would come online with the market rate units. And we do have a plan, I think it's on. The one with the.
Thank you, Carl. The short version is, we have 35 affordable units, and there's no more than one affordable unit per building. And so 35 of the buildings will have affordable units, and then the remainder will not. And so those are evenly dispersed across the site. The red asterisk, which might be a little hard to see, but the location of the affordable unit per building. And then the, the small circle with the two or three just indicates the bedroom count. This was something that we had to put together for the housing commission because they wanted to see the location of front entries of affordable units and the bedroom count. And so one per building, as you see here, in 35 of the 49 buildings.
All right, thank you. Does that answer your question?
That does.
Okay. Oh, sorry, District of Fontaine, have a comment?
I do have a comment, if you will. So, so the phasing, unless, the way the code is and the way our typical developments read are, it's one continuous phase, right? So realistically, given the number of units here, I didn't expect them to literally land foundations simultaneously with all the buildings. So that's why we asked, what is the phasing plan for this? Understanding that, you know, our desire is one continuous phase, it could be the first part running right into the second part, into the third part continuously, but not literally simultaneously. There's a difference between continuous and simultaneous. And so I wanted to make that clear. We wanted to start negotiating provisions to understand that reality and how that will work. As the applicant has mentioned, we talked about that, it's really more part of a development agreement aspect of things that the council considers, but that is the answer to that question. And there's a good point made about where are the affordable units? They have been reviewed by the housing commission, and that has, it has received approval. They're going back for the reduction of one unit now because they've reduced the, the number of units in total, per the number going from 240 to 232. But as you could see by this, they are distributed throughout the development, and we will take a look at the various phasing and see how that all matches up with the number of affordable units and such that are required in, in each phase, so that we don't have what happened, as was alluded to by Commissioner Henry 20 years ago or so, with regard to Laurel Park. Having said that, we do and we will want that clubhouse or that common amenity to be part of the beginning phase of, and the first part of whatever the phasing turns out to be, the continuous phasing. And so it is, as they had shown just a minute ago. As far as the look for the affordable units, I mean, the facade is going to be the facade of the remainder of those buildings for the variation that you saw in those, those graphics. That's our understanding, and I threw you, Chair, to the applicant to confirm that, but that's my understanding of what they will be. Thank you.
That's my understanding as well. Any more questions from the commission? Oh, it's down here on the right. Commissioner Inchuk.
Thanks. I have a question.
Thanks, I have a question about the front-loaded townhomes and especially the rendering that was shown, I wonder if we could pull that up quickly. My concern is, in looking at the rendering and seeing how close the garages are to the sidewalk, that it looks like it could be kind of hazardous for people who are walking in the development. And so my question's really about like the rationale for having those front-loaded units and whether it's possible to have as many as we can be rear-loaded.
I can provide a couple of comments on that and...
Okay, thanks.
If you'd like, I can go to the, yeah, is that before all these? Let me just scroll for a second. Ah, okay. What I can start with though is, we have 10 front-load buildings on site and then 39 rear-load buildings, so there are much fewer of the front-load buildings in a ratio compared to the rear-load. What we, and Terry can certainly chime in better on this than I can, but that's a site planning kind of exercise and not needing to have, you have to walk around your building from the alley to get to the front, and so at the perimeter of a site, it typically makes more sense to have a front-load building. And what you're seeing in this graphic is the width of the front stoop, which is not the same width as the sidewalk going to the front entrance, and so there will be grass in between each driveway as well. Keep going down. Go to the 3D? Sure. Oh, at the end? Got it.
Yes, you could see from this rendering how your experience of somebody walking down that street would be a lot more comfortable on the rear-loaded side, but there's not a sidewalk over there, there's only a sidewalk on the front-loaded side, which to me, I wouldn't feel comfortable.
There's a sidewalk on both sides.
Oh, there's a little parkway.
Looks like a little... That looks like a teeny sidewalk.
Five-feet sidewalk, or five-foot sidewalk, I believe.
I'm going to assume that it meets all of our sidewalk and driveway requirements. Correct? Otherwise, we would be here for variation on that.
Staff will review that aspect of it, Madam Chair, to ensure that, but recall that these streets are, they're not subdivision streets that will be taken as public, they're private streets. That means that there are, it does not have to meet the subdivision code for streets, so we'll make sure to check that. Those sidewalks, the applicant indicated were five feet, five feet is acceptable, and then asking also about the driveways and their depth as well as I take, right?
Yes.
We'll provide that information unless the applicant has it, we'll be reviewing that regardless.
Again, my name's Tom Black. The rear-loaded units front the wooded area, so we can't put a driveway in the back, and we didn't want to bring the sidewalk around the back for the entry in the wetlands area, so we kept both of those up front, and that just follows the perimeter of the site all the way to the end.
Thanks, yeah, I think, like I said, I think the concern is that, like for right here, is the driveway too short, is that going to be a safety issue for the pedestrians?
So the driveway stack is 18 feet, 6 inches, the, which is a typical parking stall depth.
Okay.
The sidewalk in front is four feet wide and there's a six-foot parkway in front as well. And just to add to the, to the, to the, to the front garage homes is that, and also there's another market, there's a marketing aspect of having a, just a different building type that offers rear decks and that look out onto the open space, that it's just a different, a different offering.
Yeah, no, that's nice. We just wanted to make sure that all the walkers are safe and they're not going to get run over by a car coming out of the driveway, which I guess could happen anyway. Mr. Berhaud?
So I was just going to comment, just to follow up on what the applicant representative had said, is these front-loaded units here back up to the wooded area and the, and then, right, the dimensions here, it's an 18 and a half foot long parking pad on the front, 17.9 is adequate for zoning codes, so half a foot longer.
Madam Chair, you know, that is necessarily due to the configuration of these homes. Where that sidewalk is landed, you know, is another question, they have a six-foot parkway strip there. So, you know, 18, 6, yep, meets the parking space requirement, but you know, you'd have to park pretty snugly up against that garage door there, so I just point that out.
Yeah.
The street trees are included in the parkway strip, which is six feet wide, and then there's the five-foot sidewalk, is my understanding of this, yeah, five-foot is the typical sidewalk.
The sidewalk on this side looks like it's four feet.
But where is the, yeah, where's the marking for the sidewalk on this side of the street?
Well, on this side I don't see, but it's 10.5 feet from the sidewalk to the parkway.
No, I see it, it's down, move the cursor to the lower, right, right there, four feet, six inches.
Four feet, six.
Do you see that?
So, three to the applicant, is it four feet, six inches, or five feet on this side for the front-loaded?
On the other side, it's five feet.
There, it's five, yeah.
I thought that was the typical there.
The six feet, six inches is a measurement of the parkway and the curb, the six-inch
But what's the side?
Now, along the, along the opposite side, in front of the three-story rear-garage homes, where the, where there's parking, parallel parking, including the curb, the sidewalk is five feet wide.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, anybody else, oh, yes, sorry, Commissioner Mantas.
Thank you, and I don't know who this is addressed to, so anybody feel free to hop up to answer it, but I guess my question is, and I apologize that it's taken me several meetings to even think to ask it, but as we've had conversations about density and units per acre as recently as tonight, I'm wondering if you all have done any type of market study to speak to the demand for this type of product in this area? You know, as I listen to different podcasts and, and, you know, study the real estate market, you know, the theme is that America is undersupplied from a housing perspective at a 50,000-foot level, and I'm just curious what studies you have that you might be able to speak to that kind of opine on the demand for this here, because I think that there's affordable housing, big A affordable, that we look for in our code, but then there's attainable housing that younger people, millennials such as myself, would otherwise want to be able to tap into, that I think is somewhat lacking here, so if you can speak to that, that'd be great.
Thanks for the question, and I think we listened to the same podcast about the issue facing the country right now when it comes to housing. So, we haven't, didn't do a formal, you know, market study or anything like that. I know at our very first meeting a few months ago, we spoke pretty extensively about Habitat Company and their extensive experience, very recent success in the market, so they are living, eating, breathing this day in and day out, and they truly wouldn't be going through this process if they didn't have a strong belief that this will be a successful product type in this market that is in demand.
My name's Zach Zoller, I'm with the Habitat Company, I've not been sworn in yet.
You swear to tell the truth, other hand. Swear to tell the truth, tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
The other right hand.
Thank you.
So, just to further, you know, speak on that point, just as recent as yesterday, we met with SEPA to discuss the need for inclusionary housing and then just the overall demand for attainable housing as compared to some of the multimillion-dollar condos that are being developed downtown. We are not that, to be clear, but we're also not, you know, bottom-of-the-barrel type of housing. We are going to build a very nice product here, as you can see, we've been listening to design, you know, your comments about design every single time we come back here. So, we are working on getting a letter of, not support, but show that there is a massive need for attainable housing from SEPA, we just couldn't get it before this year, most likely can get it in the coming weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, well, you, just out of curiosity, and I know I asked this question a couple of meetings ago, has any decision been made on whether this is going to be ownership or rental or some combination thereof?
So, we went to the housing commission and were able to get approval for either for rent, for sale, or a combination thereof, because we want the flexibility to deliver all this housing should market conditions change.
Got it, so, so basically, no decision has been made on it? You're considering all of it?
Correct.
Okay, and I would just, one other comment, Carl, could you put on one of the renderings of the, of the street? It's not a question, frankly, would you, yeah, that, I would say to Commissioner Mantas and Commissioner Nannas, if you want to get a sense of the density from the applicant's point of view, take a look at the renderings there and the renderings that are in our, the packet that we were provided with. That'll give you a sense of it, better than looking at Chantilly, frankly.
Right, right.
Thanks, Carl.
Anybody else from the commission?
I have one more.
Oh, Councilmember Ross.
One more question, could we look at the site plan again with the landscape?
Councilmember Ross, this one, the landscape plan?
No, the one that, that's called, yeah.
That one?
That one. I'm just wondering, for row houses on the north end, there are four, four groups, R6, 7, and 8, and I was just wondering, had there been thought about rotating R12 and R11 somehow allowing those groupings to feel more connected to the rest of the development, more connected to the clubhouse? With more views that way, you see what I'm saying? If you...
Can someone turn R12 and R11 to us?
Yeah, if you had added them sort of to the end of those to sort of tie, tie them to the clubhouse. Does that make any sense?
So 11 and 12 are the two horizontal ones?
The ones that are 90 degrees to the, those four. They're, they're kind of blocking the clubhouse?
Those two, right?
Yeah.
So you would suggest that they would be rotated?
I'm just wondering if you had connected, if the four that are, the ends are facing the businesses, and if you, if you took those two groupings and added them, you know, to the end so that you had views of the clubhouse, so that those four groupings felt more connected to, to the, to the development, as opposed to sort of being blocked?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was going to say, that the access around the building would be compromised to where you'd lose that, that ability of emergency vehicles getting through it.
Yeah, can you please come up and speak and state your name again?
Zach Zoller. As you can see, the reason why they are facing each other is those are rear-loaded units, so they will have nice courtyards in between units. That will create sense of community between the neighbors within those blocks.
I, I understood the, your answer about the fire situation, yes.
Okay, I'd like to, unless we have anything else pressing from the commission, I would like to move on so that we have, the public has a chance to speak, so if you're a member of the public and you would like to speak, please come over and start maybe lining up over by the microphone. And if you've not been sworn in before, I will need to swear you in when it's your turn. Okay, please stand by the microphone.
Name is Tats, sworn in previously.
Okay.
The high density in this plan will result in major traffic congestion at the point across from the police station where their planned driveway will allow for not only right turns in and out, which is the limitation employed in similar enclave developments such as Chantilly, but the developer's plan includes left turns into and out of the development across two lanes of traffic. The problem with the left turn into or out of that entrance is that if there's a vehicle in either of the two opposing lanes, the left-turning vehicle will have to wait and in the process back up traffic onto Old Deerfield Road and onto Richfield. We know that the developer is well aware of the traffic congestion issues that will result from their plans, which is why in the most recent iteration of their plans, they have proposed placing a driveway out of the police station which leads directly onto Deerfield Road instead of relying on the old Deerfield exit. This proposal would create a dangerous accident risk for cars traveling east on Deerfield Road that are not expecting any vehicles coming out of the police station. I would assume that an exit onto Deerfield Road was not created when the police station was built for just that reason. We strongly recommend that instead left turns out of the development occur at the access road, which is a short distance east of the developer's proposed entrance and exit. The access road is sufficiently wide to accommodate a designated lane for left turns without hindering normal traffic on that road. This would mean that left turns from the entrance and exit of the development across from the police station would be prohibited. Instead, vehicles coming south down Richfield Road from Deerfield, which left at the corner of Richfield and Old Deerfield Road, and then make an easy right turn onto the access road. With regard to the density created by the presence of the townhouses, the developer has suggested that to reduce the number of townhouses will make the venture not profitable, but we have not been provided with sufficient data to analyze that suggestion. I'd like to make a quick analysis of the numbers with some assumptions. First, let's assume the developer is limited to 180 townhouses to accommodate the increased density of traffic, a drop of just 25% from the 240 previously suggested. We may assume that each townhouse has about 2,000 square feet, and the median price per square foot for a townhouse in Highland Park is $285, according to Google AI, which includes older construction. Of course, new construction would likely be higher per square foot. If we multiply the 180 townhomes by the 2,000 square feet, we get 360,000 square feet in total floor space for the development. If that is multiplied by the $285 per square foot, we arrive at a top-line revenue number of over $100 million. I feel confident that the property owner can turn a profit from that number of homes despite implying that they can't afford to reduce the density. We assume the developer has projections based on varying assumptions, show us the numbers.
Thank you.
If I go next then? Okay, with regard...
And your name again?
I'm sorry, I'm Lynn Tats, and it's been a year since I was sworn in.
Oh, no, we need to swear you in for this, then. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
With regard to the current traffic assessment, anyone who lives on Ridge or off Ridge knows that if we're going to compare solo cup, it was a disaster for traffic twice a day. The traffic to and from schools, both students on foot and in buses and cars in the morning and afternoon, added to the exit and entrance of employees, and it was gridlock during those periods. Okay, we also know that Old Deerfield from Richfield east to the access road by the railroad tracks is not particularly busy at any time. I go to Jewel at most times of the day and I don't encounter traffic until I reach the four stop signs at Richfield and Old Deerfield Road. So, using the access road that was proposed by the railroad tracks would really not increase roadway traffic to any extent. roadway traffic to any extent. Furthermore, if you frequented the businesses along that access road, you would have experienced little traffic. I have frequented some of them. Despite any delivery trucks that pull into the parking areas in front of the storefronts, there's usually fine movement. I've been to many developments which have to accommodate traffic, both by creating access roads off the main street as the developments on Lake Cook have done, and by creating right-only entrances and exits such as the one at Chantilly. As a residence of the homes between Lake Cook and Deerfield and we're closer to Deerfield, we cannot turn left from Lake Cook to Ridge. We go all the way around the corner to Skokie Boulevard and then turn left onto Clavy and into our area. So these are normal diversions created to ease traffic in Highland Park. I'm asking that we remember that when this area was originally zoned, it did not have the number of residences and businesses that converge on Ridge Road and Old Deerfield Road. It is important to recognize that this area was zoned when it was far less developed, and we need to consider whether, excuse me, that is, zoned currently suits the current environment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next.
Martin Karp, I was, I was sworn in the last meeting.
Okay.
And I apologize, I got here about 10 minutes late, and I apologize if this was already addressed. I know in the last couple of meetings, the question came up about the school impact population, or to school, public school population impact, and I think there is a lot of concern that the numbers that were being used were substantially off. Has that been reworked at all?
I'm going to take that question, and we'll answer it. Do you have anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll, Carl or Joel, do we have an answer to that question?
Well, Chair, so the, all the most, whatever the most recent updated school projected numbers are, were provided to all of the three school districts for their review. They do not object to the development, they did not indicate concerns.
Okay, thanks.
The applicant also provided additional information, I believe, in response to the District 109's comments.
Okay. All right, next.
I'm Jeff Malk, I'm a Highland Park resident, and I have not been sworn in.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, I'll need you to spell your last name.
M-A-L-K.
Okay. You have three minutes.
So I just decided to come. I'm a developer myself, so I'm usually sitting in the seats right here.
Hot seats.
Exactly. I know the feeling, and I know it really, really well, and I think it's worthwhile for someone to come up and speak on behalf of the developers, because frankly, I think, you know, it's important for this area, this, this town to understand who is coming to this town, which is Habitat. Habitat is one of the preeminent developers in Chicago. They've been probably at the forefront of the game for at least 50 years. It's a really big deal for us to get a group like Habitat in Highland Park. So I think that, you know, as you guys continue to throw stuff at these guys and they continue to sort of dodge and reply with the right stuff to cater to everyone's needs, it's important that everyone understands that these are, you know, some of the top guys in the space. And there are a lot of not such good guys in the space, so as a guy that's in the space, I know. So I think that's really sort of the key point I wanted to get across. I also think it's important that we understand that this site has been sitting vacant for as long as I can remember. I grew up in the Red Oak neighborhood. It's been, you know, frankly, just a waistline. And we live in a phenomenal community, and there should be real tax revenue getting generated from a site like this. It's a high caliber site, these guys are the right guys for the job. I know traffic is always an issue, no matter what the development is, it's always an issue, but these guys are really, really in the, in the right position to deliver a product that I think we're all going to be really happy about. And the last thing I'll say is, one of the things that makes Habitat very unique in the space is that they do provide attainable housing. Habitat is very capable of building the most beautiful high-rise you'll ever see, but they also provide affordable housing and attainable housing in all of their projects. It's one of the reasons that I have so much respect for them. And so what I think that we should be pretty proud of is that they're catering to our needs as Highland Park residents to provide attainable housing that most of these developers, frankly, are not doing. So let's not lose sight of that. And that's all I got. So thank you for your time, appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much. All right, next.
Hi, I'm Janet Swartz, and I have not been sworn in.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, you've got three minutes.
I am actually a former Plan Commission Chair and a former Housing Commission Vice Chair, and I've lived in the community more than 40 years, and I'm here today to speak not just for myself, but for my good friend Betsy Lasar, who as a city staffer helped develop our affordable housing plan in the city and has lived here more than 35 years. And we share some of the views of the speaker who just spoke about feeling that this is a real opportunity for our community and being pleased with the caliber of the developer that we're listening to tonight, and the improvements in this proposal over the ones that we've seen for this property in the past. And I also want to thank the staff and the commission for what you've done to improve the proposal over time. We appreciate your hard work. The proposal for this quieter and less traffic-producing site is a vast improvement of what we have seen earlier proposed for this property, and the preservation of more than twice the required open space is a wonderful positive for our environment while enabling a variety of housing types that will benefit Highland Park. Currently, we definitely do face a housing shortage nationwide, as well as a critical housing shortage in our own county. I'm speaking as an individual today, but I do serve on the Lake County Housing and Community Development Commission, and just a few days ago, I attended a meeting for people involved in housing in the county, and there were slide after slide, and the statistics are frightening for those of us who want to continue to live here, want our children to live here, want to have businesses here, and want our community to continue to thrive. So we're very pleased that this proposed rezoning will support the kind of development we need to attract young families and vital employees who together can continue to have the kind of community here that has been thriving and that we'd like to see thrive in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Michael Turnoff, and I have been sworn in.
Okay.
And Carl, if you wouldn't mind, please, putting up the PowerPoint. While Carl's doing that, I originally had five recommendations regarding traffic, but they've answered, they were labeled A, B, C, D, and E, and they've answered A, B, and C in the presentation earlier, so I'd like to just skip to my recommendation D, which is on slide number five, if you don't mind. By the way, thanks for answering the first three questions. That's why we, and myself and a number of other people, have been asking for a long time for a meeting with the developers, which still hasn't happened, but we do thank you for answering those questions. Before I get into slide five, I have a question about the math. In your earlier presentation, you said that there were 232 units and 464 garage spaces. If even half of those families that live in the 232 units have two working spouses, then there's going to be 348 people who will be leaving for work and returning, and returning from work during the morning and evening rush hour times. That doesn't seem to jive with the numbers in your traffic proposal, so I was just wondering, perhaps later you can offer an explanation for that. Moving on to slide number five, which is, should have a recommendation, is that slide number five? Should have recommendation D.
Six.
Slide number six, I'm sorry, my bad. Recommendation D was to eliminate the proposed entrance to and from the access road at the end of Richfield at point number seven on the slide. It's important to note that the Richfield Road, during that little stretch of road that we're moving, moving the cursor along there, is really more like an alley than a road. If you haven't driven down that road, I recommend that you, that you do so. It seems to me that the proposed entrance to and from the access at point number seven is A, unnecessary, and B, if approved, would be a hardship for the businesses along Richfield Road there, which have deliveries and parking for customers and clients and other things. Please go on to the next slide. Recommendation E is actually a recommendation that was made by the developer from a previous proposal, but seemed to me and to others as a good idea. The recommendation is to add a deceleration lane into the development from Ridge Road, where Carl has the cursor going now, and also to add a left turn lane at Ridge Road and Old Deerfield Road when you're coming south or southwest down, down Old Deerfield Road. Those seemed like good recommendations, and they were made by a traffic consultant who was also considering an entrance similar to that one at that point for a more dense unit. The next slide, please. The next slide has some final comments. As you travel down, southbound Ridge Road, Sherwood School is currently closed for remodeling, but is scheduled to open, I think, in September of '26, and there's currently a large new park district facility under construction at West Ridge. Both of those, when completed, will add significant traffic to the Ridge Road. Thank you.
If I may, we had the West Ridge Center here some months ago, and it is a smaller facility than it is now. So it's not going to be a new large, it's a new facility, but it's not going to be really big, so I'll just say it now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, that was very nice. Okay.
And Sherwood.
Okay, and Sherwood Shrinkin' too. I don't have anyone at Sherwood.
Hi, my name is Rick Ballnick, I was-
Previously sworn in or not?
I was sworn in.
Okay, wonderful, then go ahead, you have three minutes.
I apologize if this was addressed before, but sometimes it was difficult to hear when people weren't talking loud enough, so I apologize if this was addressed. I only have three concerns, and they all have to do with traffic. One is the path which goes into Devonshire Court, crossing the street. When you're coming north on Ridge, the road turns, and so it's very difficult to see if somebody's crossing, if somebody's going north on Ridge, they could easily go too fast if somebody's crossing the street. So just be aware that the road turns just south of where you want to put that path. My second concern has to do with the increase of traffic when you're headed north on Route 41. Any one of us who tries to take that, that turnoff onto 41, you take your life in your hands because cars don't stop, and if you have many more cars going north on 41, that's going to be a very serious problem, I think. So I want to have some concern about that. My last traffic concern has to do with, I am a bicyclist, I go on Old Deerfield Road right in front of Bluegrass all the time. I am concerned if it's not right only in and right only out. I'm very concerned about all the left-hand turns for those of us that drive, as well as the bicycle. I could care less about how the place looks. I'm more concerned about traffic, kids getting hurt, bicycles getting hurt, and going on 41 in particular. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dan Wagner, I've been signed, sworn in before.
Okay.
A couple of things that they actually did on some of my suggestions that I made were made maybe by others also, but they did the color palettes being switched around, so everything wasn't-
Yeah, we need you to speak up into one of the micro, you can lift it up.
Sure. The color palettes being mixed up, you know, I think it's a lot better looking. My question is, nobody seems to be, other than the first two gentlemen, the first couple that showed up, talking about using Richfield as a entrance in and out of the facility, meaning Richfield headed east from Old Deerfield Road, and taking it down to the spur and going in the back way. Perhaps that's a way to make the left turn out of there rather than making a left turn right onto Old Deerfield Road, going up and going and making the left turn at Richfield, Richfield and Deerfield Road. And then the, okay, drawing a blank, I want my other point, so, but, so, thank you very much.
Thanks. Just my own comment on that is, I think sometimes when too many traffic control measures are put in place, it's confusing for drivers, and then you end up with people doing something like, oh, I'm going to just pull off to the side to figure it out, I'm going to do a U-turn here. I have a feeling you're not going to see a lot of people turning left out of this development to go down Ridge because they really won't need to. You know, most of them are going to try to get up through Richfield and get over to Deerfield Road, or go up Richfield to 41. I don't know. So that's just my gut instinct, and I think they'll figure out-
Well, I mean, you're making a left turn lane, I mean, part of it, you're making a left turn lane onto Richfield Road there.
Yeah.
If you're south, if you're southbound on Old, on Old Deerfield, you've got a left turn lane, you're adding a left turn lane onto Richfield, so I would assume that people are going to use that to go into the facility. Why not just put it there?
Right, yeah, all right, I don't know. Okay, thank you.
Michael Lex, 1967 Cavell, I've been sworn in previously.
You've been sworn in, yes.
I'm good.
Yeah, go ahead, you've got three minutes.
Good evening. I believe rezoning R7 to R1 is the most appropriate zoning for the open spaces, a conservation need. It would be a down zoning from the neighbors, not an up zoning. While the height is measured from grade, it also isn't measured with the peak of the roof, that should be a concern. This development needs approximately five feet of height relief per building. If I were to build a house from 35 feet to 40 feet in height, my request would only be for five feet, but this development has 50 buildings, so they basically need 250 feet of height release. Stack that release one atop of the other, and you could wind up with 700 townhouses that require 35 feet. The public benefit needs to be compensatory to that release. I don't think that parking spaces and painted crosswalks meet that level. I prefer to see a sidewalk along Ridge that will get more uses than the wooded path. I don't want to see the sidewalk on the police site reduce to six feet from the current eight feet. There is no need for that accessory me wall along the police property line. Extending the eight-foot sidewalk as a multi-use path down to the bike path trail would be a true public benefit and give cyclists a safer means of traveling down Old Deerfield Road to get to the future new bridge over Route 41. The street improvements include a left turn lane to head down the alley from Old Deerfield Road. However, future residential development on the Jewel and Bacon Pet Corn Toys around site may result in the need for more through lanes heading towards Ridge. The community would be better served with a deceleration lane from Ridge Road into the development. The development has a 50-foot wide access road, and 42 feet is available to be improved and widened to accept more traffic from the development. The traffic trip count for the current uses of the access road entrance is extremely low with no more than seven trips for one of the peak times. The traffic study shows that this access road has less traffic currently from the businesses than what is projected to be from the development. The developer needs to make an effort to fully utilize the access road with additional lanes, including a dedicated left turn lane, that make the residents feel more comfortable to use it. The traffic consultant assigned half the development traffic from Old Deerfield Road left down right, Richfield Road, to right turns. Those right turns don't need to be assigned to that intersection. If they want to head to north, to North Route 41, they can simply use the STEM access road and proceed right to a ramp that leads up to the highway. If they want to get to Jewel, they can simply go down Old Deerfield Road to the Jewel entrance. This traffic study, therefore, needs to be reworked. This concern would also alter the count for left turns from the development on the Ridge Field Road. There are only at most eight projected peak time left turns out of the development that could eas, that could easily be handled down the alley and allow the entrance to be right in and right out, and then expand a left turn lane on Old Deerfield Road. I provided what I think is a compelling case that the development is designed as an enclave by comparing it to a previous proposal. There are still ways to mitigate this, which I suggest in my written testimony, that the light industrial should be expanded to 60 feet along the northern property line to provide an equally spaced buffer. Other site buffers range from 100 feet to 240 feet. The buffer would allow future connectivity to the adjacent properties as required by the council. Those properties, if they were ever repurposed or rebuilt to support commercial businesses, would be a benefit to the residents of the development. The buffer would also allow for some future realignment and support the revitalization needed within- needed within the Briar Gate redevelopment area and align it with the city policy for the Briar Gate District. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next.
Hello, I'm William Dixon, and my backyard...
Have you been previously sworn in?
Yeah, I've been previously sworn in.
Okay, so you've got three minutes.
I've been previously sworn in. I'm William Dixon, and where my backyard and Solo Cup property begins, I live on Grove. And I just want to say from history, I actually moved there in 1985, so it's a long time ago. I never had a problem with Solo Cup, I thought they were very, very good neighbors, as a matter of fact. And since they've been gone, I've been kind of wondering what's going to be right behind me, I mean, if this is going to be a part of my life and on a daily basis. And I heard only good things about Habitat Company, as a matter of fact, that they've built some really nice-looking products and have a very good reputation, so that makes me feel good. One thing I do want to say, though, is the zoning requirements, from what I understand, they're standards, and that's what you're supposed to fit in, they're going into this new zoning district, and within that zoning district, there are standards and requirements. Well, I'm a plumber, and for 47 years, I've had to live by standards and requirements. If I built something that was 45 feet tall, and the Mr. Enforcer of standard and requirements showed up and said, "Bill, you know that the standard is 35 feet, why didn't you build it 45 feet?" I would say to him, "Well, if you go stand on that sidewalk way over there, you'll look and see it only looks 38 feet tall." And he might say, "Well, Bill, you know that it's only 35 feet tall, you still built it three feet too tall." And I'll say, "But, you know, I thought it would add to the ambiance." I think the guy would look at me like it was crazy. The standards are the standards for a reason, aren't they? I'd like to see a really nice development back there. I think they're going to build it, I really do. I think it's too dense, but it's not for me to say, I don't get to dictate to them what they do. But I think that the standards are standards for a reason. I have to live with them every day on my job. I feel pretty strongly about this. I think it's too tall. You may get what you're, the 45 feet, but when you look back, you're going to have a, I think it's going to look ridiculous. It'll look better if it were built more towards standards. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
General, whatever, Bluegrass, yes, I've been sworn in.
Yes.
Chair, can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
This speaker did submit a public appearance form, Mr. Letter, so he can also ask questions to the applicant.
Okay.
That was one question that has not been answered yet, but I've got a couple of concerns. One, we've had 12 hours of dialogue at least, the needle is just starting to be moved. I'm seeing some progress. Once again, supposedly we have a great quality company here, they've changed it a bit, it's looking better, but the neighborhood, the four businesses that are right along the north side, we're very concerned. I mean, the traffic flow, I've sent pictures of what our alley looks like today, what kind of truck traffic we get. You start adding more cars, there are some strong concerns of safety for anybody, okay? Because there are numerous 54-foot trucks going down the street daily, and this hasn't been addressed at all. And additional parking in the area, we're already challenged a bit. Businesses have grown, which is good, so we further challenge ourselves. So it's going to challenge us, and we need to have a little bit of give back from them as well. They should be further back, they should be 50 feet at least, or 60 feet from the property line, to give us a little bit of slack. I mean, if you're going to build a 45-foot building, public benefit, well, that's a whole separate question, but if they're going to get that, what are they doing for the neighborhood? And if they want to give back, well, then I'm all ears.
So is your concern about Richfield Road or the alley that goes behind the businesses there?
Well, you can see by this picture here, and actually, this was taken short, 20 minutes later, two more beacons trucks showed up.
Okay.
Okay? And that was just a day in our life. We get deliveries at least five days a week.
Okay.
We have trucks getting parked on the side of our building as well. So the access on our street is nominal for real through traffic. Their back access spur is 50-foot access, you could put three lanes, 10 feet wide, 12 feet wide, put one in the middle, so you could have access, because the backside of those buildings also have some challenges.
Yes. All right, thank you.
And there was one other note that I sent to them, and hopefully you can address that as well.
Oh, Carl?
Yes, we did receive a question from Mr. Letter. We can read that.
Is there a way to pull that question up so we can all see it?
Yep, I'll just, I'll read it to Mr. Letter. Oh, you've got to pick up the question. So Mr. Letter did submit a public hearing appearance form or cross-examination request through you, Madam Chair. The question is, has the developer or any of their agents ever offered a portion of land to the city as a public benefit or in any other capacity while attempting to garner the relevant variances or permits? That's how it reads verbatim.
Okay, I did not see that.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the...
Okay. To my knowledge, no.
It's through you to the applicant, my understanding of Mr. Letter's request.
Okay. Oh, it's for the applicant to answer, so from the applicant...
Mr. Letter's request, sorry.
Zach Zeller, again, I did make a request to Director Fontaine to ask the question if the city would be open to taking title to the forested buffer area. It was not in exchange for anything whatsoever, just a question if they would be interested in maintaining it as a park, and which Director Fontaine came back and said they would not be.
All right, thank you.
That's all with regard to that, and we do have another.
There was one other submitted as well that was in the packet. Hold on one second, please. Okay, so the other question, and this was in the packet, this was on page, I'm scrolling there.
I wanted to say something for the record here, Chair.
Okay, sure. Councilmember Ross.
What was just read was not something that certainly I, as a council member, was aware of. This was new information.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know that as well.
All right, so the other one was from Aaron Kazdin, this was in the packet, this was on packet page 100, and I'm just going to read it verbatim. Aaron Kazdin states, quote, "I want to understand if the developer plans to sell the units or keep and rent as a corporate landlord," end of quote.
Okay, thank you. I think we've answered that already. The answer is that that's still being decided. Right. Okay, does anyone else in the public need to speak, because we are running out of time for our meeting? We need to wrap it up. All right. So we need to decide if we're ready to direct findings of fact. We've had a good look at the design now. Did we approve the design review already or no?
No, no, nothing has been approved, nor has there been direction for any drafting of recommendation.
Okay. So my understanding is that we still have a few answers coming back to us, and we need to, that's what we're looking for, we need to continue the meeting to a future date, and I believe we said maybe...
Staff would recommend Tuesday, August 26th, here, the same location, same time, 7:00 PM.
Madam Chair, regardless of whether the commission decides to direct drafting of findings tonight, we would need a continuation, either way.
Until you need what?
We would need a continuation of the public hearing, either way.
Of course.
Just your mind.
So let's get a motion to continue the public hearing first.
Doesn't it make sense to figure out if we want to direct findings back before we continue it?
We have to do either one.
Yeah, procedurally, if we continue the matter, then it's continued to the next date, and notice is actual, it's best if we, as Commissioner Mantis suggested, resolve issues. We know that this will be continued regardless of whether or not findings of fact are going to be recommended, right?
Okay. So are we ready to have findings of fact directed, council, commission?
I am.
Anybody else ready? It doesn't mean that...
Well, I am, but I think it's the opposite of what everybody else is going to recommend.
I mean, we can direct findings of fact to be presented to us, and then we can still, if we still have questions, we don't have to approve them yet in August, so I kind of feel like we should maybe keep things moving along and direct them. Any more opinions on this? All right, so can I get a motion?
I would move to direct staff to prepare findings of fact, recommend the approval for PUD 202500041 for a special use permit in the nature of a preliminary final plan development rezoning to R-M1 and R-7, plot of reset provision, design review and modification from City Code for a 200 and, I should say, 32-unit residential townhome development at 1660 and 1700 Old Deerfield Road.
Okay, so we have a, so we have a motion from Commissioner Mantis, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Fettner.
Voice.
Voice vote, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
A couple nays here. Commissioner Nannas was a nay, Commissioner Henry, and Vice Chair Kirch.
We'll let that be reflected in.
Okay. But that still passes since it's four to three.
Yes, it does. So only direct staff to draft findings of fact in the affirmative with appropriate conditions for your consideration.
Yes.
At the continued public hearing, which you do need to continue the public hearing to the date certain, and that date is, Carl?
Again, let me open up my calendar, make sure I say it right. It's Tuesday, August 26th, at 7:00 PM, here at this location, at the Moraine, 1201 Park Avenue West in Highland Park, Illinois.
All right, can I get a motion for that?
Just to be clear, that last motion was just for the direction of findings of fact?
Correct.
Commissioner Mantis?
Yes, we did not include the date of the continuation.
Got it, thank you.
So now I need someone to motion for the date of continuation.
Motion to continue the meeting to a date certain.
Okay, that would be August 26th, so we have a seconded, so motion by Commissioner Imcak, seconded by Commissioner Mantis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? No nays. Okay. So that motion is passed.
Okay, so this hearing has been continued, so August 26th, 7:00 PM, this room, 1201 Park Avenue West, the Moraine. Your notice is actual, there'll be no additional or new notice given. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, moving on to other business, do we have an administrative design review update from staff?
Did we give out this?
Our next meeting is a regular meeting, and that is August 19th of 2025. Anything you wish to let us know about?
We are still far, sorry, we are still far enough out from that meeting that I don't know what new items there will be. I believe there was one item that was continued for sure, the timeshare-related uses, text amendment, it was continued to that date.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, that's right, because we don't...
Oh, and also, the other item was also continued, the 942 and 932 Deerfield Road, attached townhome development, that was continued without comment.
Right, we did that first thing last meeting.
Right, so there will at least be those two items, and we're still before notice dates, and so for two weeks before, I can always tell you exactly what's on it, but for more than three weeks, then I don't always know.
Right, we've got about a month, because that, August 5th is the neighborhood net out.
That's right.
Okay. Case briefings?
None, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other business from the public? Public is here, but they're not standing up for it. Okay, so we'll say no. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.